Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today, amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that Councillor Atwood will be absent today, and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney that Councillor Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Any further apologies? Councillor Cassidy.
Chair, I wish to advise Councillor Collier will be absent, and move that she be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Kim that Councillor Collier be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,764th meeting held on Tuesday, the 20th of May 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,764th meeting of council held on the 20th of May 2025 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. I would now like to call upon Ms Carolyn Owl, who will address the chamber on the development application at 85A Bank Road, Graceville.
Please proceed when you're ready, Ms Owl. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on the development application at 85A Bank Road by Retire Australia. I'm here on behalf of the neighbourhood of Graceville, who are unilaterally distressed at the grossly disproportionate size and scale of the new development approved by council in December 2024. Despite numerous properly and professionally made submissions, providing ample opportunity to scale it to something that is appropriate, we feel that our views have been ignored. What was previously a residential aged care facility of a style harmonious to the surrounds of Graceville, that previously housed about 60 residents on a natural and historic site, with two heritage-listed buildings, Verney House and the original stable from the late 1800s, has now been approved to be replaced by four- and five-storey apartment blocks with 111 units, or around a 220-bedroom capacity. So from 60 residents to 220, from single-level units to five-level apartment blocks. I note that even four levels is a precedent for the high side of Graceville. There are no other buildings that have been permitted for four levels, let alone the five levels that comprises the largest building of the approved plan. Whilst the heritage-listed buildings will be retained, they will become invisible, completely surrounded by high-density apartment blocks of modern organic design which are unsympathetic to the surrounds. Despite our requests, council did not oblige the developer to include renders that show how the new development would detrimentally encroach on the surrounding neighbours and obscure the sightlines to the heritage value of Verney House. Precedents have been set by this approval in so many different areas, with, it seems, very little oversight from council beyond a simple question of, is it legal? Now, let me be very clear that this development is not affordable housing that is being proposed. This is luxury prestige riverfront apartments for wealthy retirees. Profit is the motive, not philanthropy. The residents of Graceville are not against redevelopment of the site. They are against the inappropriate size and ill-fitting character of the development. That will render the heritage value irrelevant of Verney House. It will destroy valuable natural vegetation assets. It will bring traffic chaos to a quiet suburban pocket that was never designed for 220 residents, let alone the staff, visitors, and service vehicles. And finally, it will create gross invasions of privacy by allowing five-level buildings to overlook neighbouring single and two-level suburban family homes. We're deeply concerned about the approved removal of the majority of the vegetation on-site, especially the mature and established 120-year-old native hoop pine trees on the riverfront. They will be cut down to make way for the new apartment blocks. We are astonished that the largest building, called Building C, has been permitted to go well beyond the existing safe-building footprint into riverbank that has flooded at every flood event, most recently in 2022, and will continue to flood in future. We are confused that someone would approve the placing of vulnerable elderly, mobility-restricted residents in a five-level building that will flood up to three metres from the current ground line, and therefore would additionally put emergency service workers, our firefighters, ambulance, SES personnel, all at risk when the moment comes to evacuate these residents, carried one by one down five flights of stairs. This development application was approved in December last year. It was justified as being legal in accordance with all the relevant legislation and planning strategies, and I do imagine this brings some comfort to people around the decision made. However, I put to you, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, your role is not to simply approve decisions legally, it is to approve decisions legally, ethically, morally, and wisely. I want to ask, I want you to ask yourself, is it ethical to cut down native mature hoop pine trees, 120 years old, massive in size, which according to the natural assets local law should be protected, just so a bigger building can be squeezed onto floodland? Is it wise to put the elderly and emergency services personnel at great risk purely for additional profit? Because the grossly disproportionate size of this development is purely to maximise profit. Now, I understand that profit is important because economic imperative underpins society, but it has to be balanced and fair. There is no need for this. I ask you, Lord Mayor and councillors, to modulate this approval, to reduce the maximum allowable levels of the buildings to three floors, and to restrict the footprint of the largest building, Building C, to remain in the previous footprint, out of the flood zone, protecting the hoop pines, because it is the legal, the ethical, and the wise thing to do. You have a duty of care and accountability as elected officials to make decisions that preserve the character of this city and the safety of its people. And where there are foreseeable risks that are well-known at the time of decision-making, it simply being legal is no defence. Just because the law does not say you cannot do it-
Thank you, Ms Owl. Unfortunately, your time has expired. Thank you. And I now call upon Councillor Allen to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mrs Owl, for coming in and presenting to council today. It's evident that you feel strongly about this matter, but I did want to touch upon some of the items you raised in your presentation. I won't go into detail about the application history. You're aware of when it was approved, when it was originally submitted, but just in the context of the framework under which council planners operate, they're required to operate under council city plan and obviously with reference to the Estate Planning Act. And one of the key things that council officers have to consider is that we operate under a performance-based planning scheme, which means they have to take into account a whole raft of considerations about the site and the proposed development, and then they obviously have to make assessments taking into consideration all those factors. So this particular application was a code-assessable development. They have obviously received all the reports and the submissions from local residents. They are required to review those submissions and assess those submissions against their city plan. That's exactly what happened in this particular instance. They go through a very rigorous process when they're assessing applications. They not only review the reports that are provided by the applicant with the submission, but they're also required to consult our internal experts, and we've got a wide range of experts that look at all the things that you raised, certainly consistency with city plan, the impacts of flooding. So all of those factors are taken into consideration when they're assessing the application. It's also not just one person who signs this off, there are a number of officers who will look over these, and ultimately, there's oversight by senior assessment delegates. The process is very thorough, it's a well-tested process that's undertaken by experienced council officers. Now, we are conscious that you've made a number of submissions, both of those submissions were reviewed. I understand you spoke to a council assessment manager about your concerns, so certainly they've been heard. The site itself is certainly something that is, that is a retirement use now, it'll be a retirement use again. You made the point that there is no need, we know that in this city, with an aging population, there is a need for retirement living, and this is obviously an opportunity to provide additional retirement living in a location that's already providing this type of an accommodation. So there was a good reason to put it here. In the council's decision, there's a document there called notice about the decision. All of the key items that were raised by submitters are addressed in that notice, and it outlines the council officers' decision-making in this regard. You've made a number of points about heights and flooding and what have you. All of those items are addressed in that document. The heritage aspects have obviously been considered in the context of the assessment. The site has state and local heritage significance. All of those items were considered. The traffic volumes were also considered as part of the assessment process. They looked at the flooding and the potential implications of that, and how that might be mitigated in the context of this site. So I can assure you, council officers have been through this application with a fine-tooth comb. They are aware of what submitters have said, and they have addressed those items as they've gone through the assessment process. I appreciate that there is a change occurring on that site. It's obviously a significant change, particularly for people who've lived in that location for a number of years. Change is always a little bit of a challenge for people to deal with, but certainly, in the context of this site, it's an appropriate use of the site, it's fulfilling a need that we have as a city, and I do thank you for coming in to talk to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Adam, and thank you, Ms Owl, for coming in today. And Councillor Johnston, I do caution you about your unsuitable meeting conduct. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrima Council is keeping Brisbane moving, but investing in key transport corridors like Beams Road, where we recently completed Stage 1A. Can you please update the chamber on the work being done to progress the next stage of this vital transport project?
Thanks, Madam Chairman, and can I thank Councillor Parry for her question, and recognise her deep and sincere commitment to getting this city moving, in particular, the North Side, a community that she is very interested in, as I must recognise, so are you, Madam Chair, and your personal commitment to ensuring the best possible outcome at Beams Road for your residents. Now, Beams Road is located in the Castle Diantagum area, it runs east-west, and we have been working on a project between the limits of Lacy Road at one end and Handford Street at the other. I was able to enjoy the turning on of the lights at the new Dorval intersection, which replaced that roundabout, which saw, from memory, 11 accidents in a 12-month period, typically. Now, it's a set of lights operating in a much more safe and efficient manner for that community. Now, we have issued that ten, the, most councils will remember that when the first tender responses were received for the entirety of the project, there was only one tenderer, which this council took a view that that was not acceptable to only accept one tender, and then we broke the project into smaller, more manageable pieces. The part that we have concluded, Stage 1A, was finished with, as you recall, a celebratory turning on of the lights. However, we're now moving to Stage 1B. This proceeds from the eastern side of the state government's works on the open-level crossing removal towards Handford Street. Now, as you well know, we are getting on with the job after having completed the western section. The state government's project is well-advanced, and it's well out of the ground now, and you can see that in your community, and we're looking forward very much to seeing that come to a conclusion, recalling that this council is making a significant $40 million contribution to that upgrade as well, even though it is delivered by the state government. Now, this section here is, as I say, east, it poses a number of challenges that were not on the west. One, the large and increasing students at that school, relatively recently opened, and there is also a creek on this side as well. So this corridor has long been one of our most congested in the north side, and the expansion of a single lane to a double-lane corridor in each direction will remove the key bottlenecks that have been making life difficult for commuters in the outer north. It also speaks to our commitment to providing major infrastructure projects across the city as well. So your own ward, Brackenridge Ward, probably the most nor the most of all the wards, sees this significant congestion. It also sees as well a key east-west link. Many of our projects speak to a north-south, or what we would call in-house, a radial system going forward, back and forward to the city, but sometimes we talk about orbital roads, those that go around the city, and of which this is one. Now, I can with a great deal of happiness provide this information to the council, that we have awarded the contract for Stage 1B. The contract, the successful tenderer is a company that we are well experienced with using and have had some good experiences with recently. That company is Giorgio's. Giorgio's have significant, a significant local presence, many offices in Brisbane, many projects in Brisbane, both in council and at state, and are a part of our local-by-local procurement system. So congratulations to Giorgio's, and we look forward to their delivery of Stage 1B. Now, 1B, it includes a widening of the road from Castle Grove Avenue to Handford Street, Handford Road, I should say, including widening of the culvert cabbage tree creek to provide a consistent, separated four-lane carriageway. It's to improve the connectivity for people walking and riding, with a provision of a new shared path from Castle Grove to Handford along the northern side, and an upgrading of the path on the southern side. It will also mean that residents will be able to cross Beams Road without having to compete with general traffic, because we'll be building a bikeway beneath Beams Road as part of this project. That part, that will also length the north and south, so that there is no interaction for pedestrians and active travellers with motorists. And I think that's going to be a key improvement for safety for all road users, but in particular, that school that I was talking about, that I consistently either call Holy Family or Holy Spirit, and it's one of them, and I, and I know that, and I'm sure it's a wonderful school, but the upgrade will improve the everyday wellbeing of people in that community for both your ward, Brackenridge, councillor Davis in McDowell, councillor Parry in Margent, and of course councillor Cassidy in Deegan, all of the residents across the entire outer north community will benefit.
Councillor Wines, thank you. Your time has expired. Further, further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Queen's and Treasurer and Deputy Premier have both said they have not received any requests from you for funding for the Story Bridge after you mismanaged it to the state of disrepair. Is that why you have been softening the people of Brisbane up for a potential levy or toll, because you really haven't asked for any funding?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Councillor Cassidy can try and verbal all he likes, but I'm not softening anyone up for anything. Actually, wrong. I'm softening up the state and federal government, because we're coming after them. The state government built the Story Bridge, and absolutely, they should contribute towards it. But unlike the way that other people might do business, we're going to go to them with a business case. We made that really clear. And what's better than that is that the federal government is helping us with that business case. And so we've been working with the federal government for quite some time now on our proposal to receive their funding support for the business case. They're funding part of the work, we're funding the other part of the work, and that work is really gearing up now. So we will go to the state government with a business case to make sure that they know exactly what is involved here. But, you know, it's actually, it's not responsible or appropriate to go and ask them for money before you've actually got a business case in this way. And so what we know is that our officers, when I first became Lord Mayor, asked me to allocate some money to them, so that they could gear up some work on the Story Bridge, and they asked me for $80 million. And that's exactly what I allocated to do work on the Story Bridge. And that work has been ongoing for many years, and a significant amount of work has been done. But what has been clear is just like when you're renovating an old Queenslander, and actually, the Story Bridge is an old Queenslander, an iconic old Queenslander, one that we all love and know. But when you're doing work on an old Queenslander, the more work you do, the more work you find to do. That is almost the universal story. I'm yet to find anyone that's done work on an old Queenslander, where the job has been cheaper and simpler than expected, it's always the other way around, and so it is with the Story Bridge. And so as the work was done, it was, it was clear that more work is required than anticipated. And so the right and responsible thing to do-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you've asked your question, and the Lord Mayor is answering it. You are not to call out while he is doing so. Lord Mayor.
The right and responsible thing to do, when you know the project is going to be larger and more costly and more complicated than was advised, is you press the pause button, and you make sure you can do this going forward in the most cost-effective and the best possible way. And that's exactly what the business case will help determine going forward, so that we get this done properly, we do it in the most cost-effective manner, and we do it in a manner that delivers another 100 years of life for the Story Bridge. And so we'll be doing that work, we'll be doing that work right, we'll be taking the time to make sure that when we do ask other levels of government for funding, that we know exactly what we're asking for, and we've talked to them about the different options. And so we'll, we'll make sure that work happens. In the meantime, though, in the meantime, we'll continue works on the Story Bridge, including immediate works that are required to make sure that we can reopen the footpaths as soon as possible. And as we've said before, that work involves a number of components. One of those components, the contract has already been awarded, and the work is imminent. The next component, we are very close to gearing up work on that as well, and we want to get those footpaths reopened in as quick a timeframe as possible. And I know that the officers and our teams are working hard on that, to make sure that we can get people back to walking, cycling, and scooting across those footpaths on the Story Bridge. Now, obviously, the overall restoration project is a much longer-term project, a project that-
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, point of order.
Yeah, on relevance, we're all sick of the obfuscation. The question was about asking the state government for funding. Now, the only person in Queensland that mentioned putting a toll on the Story Bridge was the Lord Mayor. The question was very specific about his plans to put a toll on, because he hasn't asked the state government for funding.
Councillor, thank you. I believe that the Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question. Lord Mayor.
We see the one-man misinformation machine gearing up again, because it was just last week that I confirmed it wasn't me talking about a toll, and in fact, it was the independent-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor, and you will not call out to the Lord Mayor like that, Councillor Cassidy, and refer to him properly through me, the Chair.
It was the independent expert Restoration Committee that said that if state and federal funding wasn't forthcoming, then that might be one of the options that council could consider down the track. I've made it clear that that is in no way my preference. I don't want a toll, and I don't want a levy either. I want to make sure that we develop a partnership to get this done, to get it done right, and to get it done for the next 100 years.
Further questions? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrima Council is keeping Brisbane moving with the biggest boost to bus services in decades. Can you please update the chamber on what residents on the south side can expect from the transition to Brisbane's new bus network over coming months?
Councillor Griffiths and Councillor Marks, do not call out, and I will caution you next. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank Councillor Marks for the question, because Brisbane's new bus network is quickly approaching. From the 30th of June, over 70% of Brisbane's bus routes will be changing, many of which, Councillor Marks, are on the south side. When we started this project, one of the key issues that we wanted to fix was the bunching of buses coming over Victoria Bridge in the morning and evening peak. And we know this occurs because there's too many buses travelling from the south side into the CBD. Brisbane's new bus network fixes that problem. We are shifting to a hub-and-spoke model. It means we'll be able to feed suburban buses into major busway stations and onto the metro. They'll transfer onto high-capacity, high-frequency services, either being metro or buzz buses. This change allows us to reduce the number of buses travelling over Victoria Bridge by whopping 30%. This will reduce congestion, and it will make moving around our city easier. But that is not the only benefit for south-side residents, Madam Chair. Brisbane's new bus network includes new bus routes, extended all-day services, and improved frequency in our suburbs. We will add, just from the new bus network alone, 160,000 new trips into the network annually. The new network will reduce congestion on our roads and improve the reliability of existing services. It will provide more suburban connections to key destinations whilst improving travel times and reducing those bottlenecks in the inner city. Now, more than half of all journeys will be faster under this new network, and 85% will be faster or the same. From the 30th of June, Brisbane will have a world-class bus rapid transit system, of which there is nothing like anywhere else in the country. Our signature metro bus has been built for Brisbane. This incredible Brisbane Metro Project team has worked collaboratively with partners from around the world to continuously improve the vehicle as the project has rolled out. It really is the best bus in the world, Madam Chair, and south-side residents will get to experience it even more with the introduction of the M1 route. Operating between Eight Mile Plains and Roma Street, we know that south-side residents are very excited to jump on board these new services. The new metro route will replace the ever-popular triple-one and 160 bus routes, which will boost capacity by 7.1 million customers each year. Just like the M2, the M1 will run at five-minute frequencies from the morning peak to the end of the afternoon peak each day. The high-capacity metro service will also run 24 hours during weekends, and we're confident it'll be popular because of the immense success, well, the raging success, as the Lord Mayor loves to say, of the M2 route. Now, M2 patronage has well exceeded our expectations, Madam Chair, increasing by 17% compared to Route 66. So this demonstrates the deliberate choice that commuters are making to change their travel behaviours and to jump on a metro instead of just a regular bus. The city, as I have said for many weeks in this chamber now, has fallen in love with Brisbane Metro. Over 1.1 million passengers have done so, and we are confident that south-side residents will also fall in love on the 30th of June. This introduction of Brisbane's new bus network alongside the M1 route marks the start of a new era of public transport for our city. On the 30th of June, though, the network will be new for both passengers and drivers. There will be a lot of change, and passengers will need to plan ahead. So we encourage south-side residents to visit council's website to see how Brisbane's new bus network will benefit them. On Monday, TransLink's website and the Journey Planner will reflect specific timetabling information for Brisbane's new bus network. As we approach the 30th of June, both council and TransLink's communication efforts will begin to ramp up. We're asking residents to get informed before the 30th of June. This is particularly important for our south-side residents, where a lot of change will be coming. Council has been working very closely with TransLink to ensure that customer support staff have been available and will be available at busway stations to help residents to navigate these changes. Brisbane's new bus net will take some time to get used to for both commuters and bus drivers, and we're asking for patience as we transition to a more connected, more reliable bus network. Change like this is sometimes hard, but always necessary and very worthwhile. The benefits of the changes we are making here, not just in the new bus or in the new network, but it is in the very model of public transport in this city, and if we can grow this model, if we can perfect this model, then we can start a new era of public transport- of public transport here in Brisbane. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on the 13th of May 2025, you stood in this chamber and claimed this council has been a good steward for the Story Bridge. The LMP has controlled this council since 2004. That's over two decades of missed opportunities, missed chances to properly maintain one of Brisbane's most iconic icons and public assets. While the footpaths were upgraded in the 90s on the southern end of the bridge, since the LMP took over, there have been no significant works done. The middle and northern spans, where the footpaths are crumbling and dangerous, are still the original 1930s structure. How do you justify calling this good stewardship when these original footpaths from the 1930s have remained neglected over the past two decades under the LMP?
Lord Mayor.
Now, we see the Greens are deciding to become the one-person misinformation machine as well. And suddenly, an expert in the Story Bridge. This is the same party that wanted to remove traffic from the Story Bridge and put a gigantic tram on the Story Bridge. I mean, the ludicrous nature of that proposal, like, they were laughed down. And so much so that when it was proposed by their Lord Merrill candidate, he backed down real quick. He was laughed, he was laughed at on that policy because this is the way that the Greens approach these things. The reality is, the Story Bridge, as I said, as I was saying before, there is 15 to 20 years of life in the Story Bridge overall. And as good stewards, in the lead-up to its 100th birthday, we started major restoration works 20 years out.
Point of order, Chair.
20 years out.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor.
The question was about the original footpaths that are still from the 1930s.
No, you've asked your question and the Lord Mayor is trying to answer it. You don't need to re-ask. Lord Mayor.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if councillor Massey was away last week. Was she away last week? No? Okay, well, maybe, maybe-
One moment, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Please remain quiet so the Lord Mayor can answer your question. Lord Mayor.
Maybe councillor Massey wasn't listening when we actually read out all of the detail from the reports, the technical reports that had been done. Maybe councillor Massey missed the opportunity to have a look at the documents that were tabled, including a really worthwhile one from AARP, which summarised all of the previous reports. The real worthwhile one from AARP, which said that the Story Bridge footpaths had between two and how many years left in them? Two to five years left, left in them, okay?
Point of order.
One moment, Norma. Point of order, councillor-
Again, relevance to the original spans that are from the 30s.
No, I don't uphold-
That haven't been-
Point of order.
Haven't been ordered, haven't been fixed by this council.
Lord Mayor.
And so maybe councillor, councillor Massey wasn't listening when I quoted from the reports last year, that, last week, that said they will need to be replaced in the next two to five years. Now, why are the footpaths closed? Public safety, public safety. It's as simple as that. Now, if we were a less responsible council, maybe someone might have made the decision to keep those paths open for longer and thinking, oh, well, there's two to five years left in them. They could maybe stay open a bit longer. But we didn't make that decision because we value public safety. We value the safety of the pedestrians and cyclists and scooter users, and we don't want to put them at any level of risk. And so, and so, Madam Chair, maybe if there was a Labour or Greens council that, you know, wanted to put a tram across the Story Bridge and close down traffic lanes, maybe they wouldn't have such a strong safety focus as we do. Maybe that's why they're criticizing the decision to close the footpaths for public safety. We make no apologize, apologies for prioritizing public safety.
One moment, Norma. councillor Cassidy and councillor Massey, I'll caution you. Lord Mayor.
Now, what does deserve an apology, though, is the fact that the Greens are backing an Extinction Rebellion-style protest to entirely block the traffic lanes on the Story Bridge on Friday. Now, how safe is that? This is Extinction Rebellion on Wheels that we're talking about. It is fully backed and supported by the Greens, who want to disrupt the 96% of people that use the bridge for the benefit of the 4% of people that use the bridge. That's the actual numbers. Over 100,000 people use the bridge mainly via car, via bus, via heavy vehicle, via truck. But 4% use the footpaths. And what the Greens are very much saying to you is that all of those 100,000 people should be disadvantaged for the 4%. And more than that, they're quite happy to-
Councillors? councillor Massey?
Misrepresentation.
I note your, I note your misrepresentation. councillor? Lord Mayor.
So maybe councillor Massey wasn't making signs to stick on the Story Bridge. Maybe councillor Massey isn't supporting this protest to block traffic lanes. She should come clean and say what she really thinks. But as far as we're all concerned, she's 100% behind it, just like their former Lord Merrill candidate is. Extinction Rebellion on Wheels. Well, how did it work out for Extinction Rebellion? The community backlash was massive, and that's what it'll be on Friday when they try and disrupt the travelling public across the Story Bridge.
Councillor Massey, your point of misrepresentation.
I'm not behind anything, even though I live rent-free in the Lord Mayor's mind. This is the community making a stand, and maybe the Lord Mayor needs to figure that out.
Councillors, councillor Murphy, please do not call out while councillor Massey is on her feet speaking. I ask you all to remain quiet. Further questions? councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, the Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor, last week, we heard some outlandish claims from councillor Griffith in relation to net debt. This follows on from the misguided claims from the leader of the opposition about the difference between debt and liabilities. For the benefit of those opposite, could you explain those key terms to those opposite? And are you aware of any other outlandish claims that need to be addressed?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to councillor Huang for the important question. Councillor Huang is right. Those opposite, Madam Chair, come into this place week after week and continue to make false and outlandish claims in relation to council's budget and council's levels of debt. So today, Madam Chair-
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Just claimed to be misrepresented.
No, councillor, you can't. You have not spoken at this meeting.
I was mentioned in the question.
No, councillor.
I was mentioned in the question.
You cannot, you have not spoken in this meeting. Please be seated. And do not talk over me when I'm speaking, councillor Griffiths. Deputy Mayor.
Madam Chair, if the opposition through you would care to listen, perhaps they might learn a thing or two. Today, I'm going to help them out. Let's turn to net debt. The leader of the opposition came into this place late last year as part of the mid-year budget review and said that debt, and I quote, is now sitting at $6.3 billion, end quote. Then, just last week, councillor Griffiths continued to sprout this incorrect relationship between net debt and total liabilities, while at the same time somehow increasing the figure to $6.5 billion. And now, Madam Chair, this simply is not true. They can't come in here and continue to say things that are not true.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
I have now been mentioned, so I claimed to be misrepresented.
No, councillor, you cannot do that.
I mentioned in a question.
Councillor Griffiths, I'm speaking, and you cannot claim misrepresentation because you haven't spoken this meeting yet. Deputy Mayor.
So, once again, listen carefully. Council's net debt is actually $3.68 billion this financial year, but it is projected to decrease every year over the forward estimates. A 7.7% decrease by '27, '28. Now, those opposite have claimed-
One moment, Deputy Mayor. Can I ask you, councillor Cassidy? Councillor Cassidy, I caution you again. Just because you don't like what is being said doesn't give you permission to call out when someone else is on their feet speaking. Deputy Mayor.
Essentially, Madam Chair, those opposite claim total liabilities as debt, which includes leasing payments and other accounting treatments. They just simply don't understand the numbers and they resort to making stuff up on the fly, week in and week out. It was, after all, the Green Labour coalition of chaos that made $3.5 billion worth of unfunded election commitments at the last campaign, spending that would have driven up our city's debt. Council's spending would have had to increase by a staggering 20%. And rates, Madam Chair, they would have to have climbed by 30%. All of this at a time in our city's history when we were facing an inflation and cost of living crisis. It's straight out of the playbook of the former state Labor government. The state government's mid-year economic and fiscal review, which represents state Labor's last budget update, has the state's net debt increasing from $25 billion in '24, '25 to $98 billion in '27, '28. That's a whopping 292% increase in net debt. All of this, on top of recent downgrades to the state's credit rating outlook, just demonstrates Labor's reckless management of public money. But it gets worse, Madam Chair. Federal Labor's recent pre-election budget shows their net debt is expected to increase from $556 billion in '24, '25 to $714 billion in '27, '28. That's a 28% increase. So, Madam Chair, council's net debt will decrease across the forward years, while the legacy of state and federal Labor's recent budgets have net debt increasing dramatically. For the benefit of the chamber, I tabled this graph, which shows the net debt. Perhaps the colours and the drawing may make it easier for those in the opposition to understand.
Thank you, Billy. It's unsuitable meeting conduct, councillor Griffiths. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To borrow a line, I won't be lectured to by Labor when it comes to balancing a budget or managing debt. It's clear that when it comes to the budget, the budget that they're responsible for scrutinizing, the opposition has absolutely no idea.
Point of order.
It's quite concerning.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Will a deputy mayor include figures in a budget this year?
That is not a point of order. Deputy Mayor.
Madam Chair, it's actually quite concerning because, as councillors, they have a statutory responsibility to the people of Brisbane to come in here and engage meaningfully in our city's governance. Yet, week after week, they come in here with no idea what they're talking about. They speak rubbish and they vote on the future of our city anyway. But I can see where they get it from.
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Kim.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. It was reported last week that a NDIS company suspended for alleged wrongdoings paid $30,000 to have lunch with you. It was also revealed that company has made donations to the Liberal Party. Did you take any notes? Who else attended that meeting and was there any follow-up?
Lord Mayor.
Donations, as always, never come to individual councillors, they in fact go to parties. Just like councillor Kim, you would have raised significant funds that went to the Labor Party to run your last election campaign. Those need to be declared appropriately through the party, and the LMP has made all appropriate declarations. But what I can say is this, we know that serious concerns about this company were raised with the Labor federal government and Bill Shorten. And the whistleblower who raised those concerns, not just once, not just twice, and had no action, but three times, was really concerned that despite the concerns being raised with the Labor federal government, no action was taken. Now, the Labor federal government is the appropriate entity to investigate and to deal with those concerns. But what I will say is that at about the same time as that individual decided to have lunch with a group of hundreds of other people in the room for an LMP fundraiser, he was also meeting with the Labor State Minister for Disabilities as well. Once again, someone who has a role in the regulation and provision of policy for disability services. And so what we see here is the Labor federal government had a whistleblower contact them three times on concerns. We saw Labor state ministers in an appropriate portfolio area meeting with that individual. And so what-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. councillor Cassidy, that is your final caution. Stop calling out, it is inappropriate meeting conduct. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so council, there's one thing that differentiates council from those other two levels. We have no role in the NDIS. We have no role in the provision of disability services. And so-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Kim.
On relevance, I was asking, my question was, did you take any notes? Who else attended that meeting and was there any follow-up?
Thank you, councillor Kim. Lord Mayor is answering your question.
Well, it wasn't actually a meeting, it was a lunch. And so, no. But I can tell you, the sushi was really good.
Further questions? councillor Adams.
Madam Chair, my question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, over the weekend, it was great to have you visit Holland Park to inspect the Shrima Council's investment in Glenderman Park. We know this is just one of the many projects which the Shrima Council is delivering across Brisbane to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better. Unfortunately, also over the weekend, we saw councillor Collier lamenting council's response to a makeshift off-road cycling track in a local park. Can you outline to the change of the circumstances around Laverick Park in Camp Hill?
councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through you, thank you councillor Adams for the question. And indeed, it was great to be out in the Holland Park ward on Saturday, particularly out in, in Glenderman Park, and to check out the progress of the new multi-use riding track that will be opening very, very soon. And while I was there, I had a lovely chat with some of the young riders, the young BMX riders. They were eagerly looking through the fencing that was around the construction site, and I could see firsthand just how excited that they were, knowing that this new facility was going to be opening in just a few weeks' time. They'll be able to test their skills on that brand-new track and have lots and lots of fun outdoors with their friends. And Madam Chair, as I said, this is a multi-use track with bike elements, but it also has skateable elements as well. And it's been designed for kids to also try out their scooter skills. It's looking absolutely fantastic, absolutely fantastic. And we are very excited to deliver this new facility in the suburbs for the local residents to enjoy. Madam Chair, the works at Glenderman Park are just another example of how the Shrima Council continues to invest in our parks. In fact, Madam Chair, the commitment of the Shrima Council to providing for two-wheeled enthusiasts is laid out in our Brisbane Off-Road Cycling Strategy, which was released back in December 2021. This is a high-level, city-wide strategy that was developed to guide the future delivery of off-road cycling opportunities and facilities within our bushland and in our parks, because we know that there is a growing interest in off-road cycling recreation. And we are delivering for the suburbs with off-road cycling facilities. As you know, Madam Chair- As you know, Madam Chair, we opened a fantastic new urban pump track in the Hurston Quarter of Victoria Park. It's a 260-metre-long track that features jumps and bumps and banked turns. And it was so great to see so many people of all ages at the grand opening and to have Olympic gold medalist Saya Sakakabara there on the day, singing the praises of the track. And coming from her, that was very high praise indeed. And we've got other BMX tracks and facilities in the suburbs right across Brisbane. In McGregor, in your own ward of Brackenridge, Madam Chair, we've got Kedron, we've got Fitzgibbon, and that's just to name a few. But it's not just BMX riders that we're catering to, for my, sorry, for mountain bikers. There are tracks in Tui Forest, in Warral Parklands, Mount Coother, in Carrawarra Forest Park and in Poo Corner. In fact, we've got dozens of locations across the city for riders to enjoy, from pump tracks to BMX tracks, our new international standard criterion track at Murray and a range of other facilities in between so that residents of all ages can test their skills to the limits, but where the safety of the user has been considered in the design. Madam Chair, over the weekend, it was raised in the media that council officers had removed some makeshift jumps in Laverick Park in Camp Hill because on inspection, after complaints had been made, it was identified that there were some safety concerns there. The local councillor got on the media bandwagon alleging that council had been targeting kids riding bikes and building little jumps and that her first and main priority as a local councillor is about how to support the kids. Well, Madam Chair, imagine my surprise when I looked into the matter a little bit more and I discovered that the local ward councillor, councillor Collier, actually had contacted council and dobbed in the kids for making these makeshift jumps. She dobbed them in. So her first and main priority seems to be dobbing in kids-
Point of order, Madam Chair. One moment. One moment, please, councillor Davis. Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, my understanding is complainants to council are confidential. The decision by councillor Davis to reveal the name of a complainant to council is a breach of council's confidentiality policies and should be actioned by you as an unsuitable meeting conduct.
It's, councillor, it's not a point of order because it's not a matter that for you to-
Point of order, Madam Chairman. My understanding is you are responsible for determining confidentiality under the meeting's local law. So how is this not a point of order? And you are also responsible for dealing with unsuitable meeting conduct in the meeting. So on either grounds, why is this not a point of order?
Councillor, if you have any concerns, you can raise this the right way. And I do advise all councillors, that is all of our responsibilities to do this.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Do you think you could finish? Wait till I finish. Speaking, please, councillor Johnson. As I was saying, it is everybody's responsibility in this chamber to uphold that, not just mine. Councillor Johnson.
Madam Chairman, I move that councillor Davis has conducted an act of unsuitable meeting conduct by releasing confidential information that she knows is confidential under council policies and procedures. And I'll deal with your non-compliance later, but I'll need a second.
Councillor Johnson, there are no points of order that can come from the floor on that towards a councillor and the decision comes back to me as the chair, so I don't uphold your point of order.
Then, point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
I move that you are engaging in unsuitable meeting conduct by failing to admonish councillor Davis for revealing confidential information in breach of councillor's code of conduct, information she knows is confidential.
Seconded.
So it's councillor Johnson, so you're moving, what are you moving?
I move that you have engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct because you have failed to address councillor Davis's breach of the, I've already repeated it, so, you know. You're the one, I've moved a motion, you've got to go, we've got to debate it.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. A motion of unsuitable meeting conduct of the chair has been moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths. I'll now vacate the chair and leave the chamber.
Further speaker? Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I have been a councillor for 17 years in this place and the one thing that we are all advised of as councillors, that we all know through our day-to-day work, that we know as part of the policies and procedures of this council, is that complainant's names to Brisbane City Council are confidential and they are not disclosed. Now, the reason that that is done is to protect residents who can make a complaint to council about something that they are concerned about, whether it has merit or not, so it can be properly investigated by council and the appropriate action can be taken. Now, it probably predates me and councillor Griffiths has been here longer, the Lord Mayor's been here longer and, you know, others. So my concern here is that councillor Davis is abusing her position as the Chair of Council. She has obtained information from somebody. She has not acknowledged the confidentiality of the complainant here. It is inappropriate for her to publish that information in the public sphere. It puts at risk anybody who makes a complaint to council. If the LMP chairs don't like a complaint-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, yeah.
Just on this one, can I just get a ruling on whether the motion before us is substantive or procedural in nature?
It's substantive, it's done this every time.
It is substantive, so there's a debate. Yes, councillor Johnson.
So the issue here is, and again councillor Wines does this every time, he knows this, it's just a disruption tactic. But what councillor Davis has done here is put at risk every complainant to council, possibly if the LMP does not like the complaint that they have made for investigation, that they may be disclosed in the media for political purposes. Now, the fact that councillor Collier has raised a safety issue, I don't know what it is, I don't need to know. I need to know that council officers are acting in good faith in response to a genuine complaint and will take the action to keep our community safe. Now, that's not what councillor Davis has done here today. She has abused the meeting's local law, she has not followed council policy and procedure, which she is required to do under the council code of conduct. Now, that has been exacerbated by the fact that the chairperson of council, who is responsible for the management of the meeting, who is directly responsible under the meeting's local law for maintaining the confidentiality of matters, denied it was even an issue for her. She then denied that we could move a motion, calling on the behaviour of councillor Davis to be addressed in the meeting right now. So councillor Landers is running a protection racket for councillor Davis, who has disclosed confidential information contrary to council policy. That is a problem for councillor Landers.
Point of order, point of order, Mr Deputy Chair.
Yep, councillor Adams.
Not only is the protection racket offensive and should be withdrawn, but she needs to speak through the chair and not scream "she, she, she" at the chair who's no longer in the room. I ask you to draw her back to speaking with order in this place.
Councillor Johnson, would you care to withdraw those? Well, councillor Johnson, you should refer to other councillors by their correct titles.
Point of order.
Yep.
Councillor Krista Adams just called councillor Johnson "she", so it's, you've got to apply the rule to everyone, so I'd ask you to apply the rule to councillor Adams too.
Well, to all councillors, please refer to other councils by their right title. Councillor Johnson.
We've had this debate too, it's just a pronoun, righto? So, of course they are, that's the deputy, the deputy protection racket. So what we have here is, is a councillor for political purposes has circumvented council's proper legal processes to protect the identity of complainants and disclosed that information in here for political purposes. The Chair of Council should have properly, under the meeting's local law and under her statutory obligation under the code of conduct, taken action against councillor Davis and ensured that the name of the complainant was withdrawn from the meeting. That's all that had to happen here. But instead, the Chair of Council refused to even acknowledge it as a proper point of order. The Chair of Council refused to acknowledge that action should be taken against councillor Davis. The simple answer here is a chairperson that understands the rules, will enforce them and protect the privacy of complainants to council. So they are not, they are not put under pressure by LMP councillors, that there is no retribution against complainants by LMP councillors, as is happening in the chamber right now, because it doesn't matter who it is, whether it's councillor Collier or anybody else, the same rules apply.
Further speaker, Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I've never heard more rubbish in the 20 years I've been in the council chamber. Absolute rubbish in every level and on every level. What we see here is a Labour councillor being caught out for being disingenuous, going to the media and saying that she doesn't like the administration shutting down these jumps, when it was her that made the complaint. Now, councillor Davis did not mention any kind of resident. The complaint came from the councillor's office. And so, it doesn't matter who it came on behalf of.
Councillors, the Lord Mayor has the floor.
It came through-
Councillor Johnson.
It came through from the councillor. Just in the same way that a little while ago, we saw the disingenuous way that councillor Cassidy was complaining about our approach to get people out of tents and into accommodation, when he had complained himself about tents in his local parks. And this is why, this is why-
Councillor Cassidy.
They don't like being called out when they're exposed to their hypocrisy.
He tabled an email from my office.
Councillor Cassidy, you didn't ask for a point of order.
Point of order.
Councillor Cassidy.
The Lord Mayor is just making things up now. He tabled an email from my office, which is over there on the table, clearly shows that I did not-
Councillor Cassidy, please be safe, it is not a point of order.
This is just rubbish.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Mr Deputy Chair, this motion is about the behaviour of councillor Sandy Landers in failing to uphold the meeting's local law. The Lord Mayor is doing exactly what councillor Davis has been doing, which is blaming somebody else and it is not relevant to the motion before us.
Councillor Johnson, what's your point of order? Look, I don't uphold your point of order, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. It's no wonder they squeal so loudly when their hypocrisy is exposed. And, and can you imagine if someone on this side of the chamber, like, displayed similar hypocrisy? Would councillor Johnson say, "Oh no, that's confidential, I won't say anything about that"? No, of course, of course not. It's ludicrous. This is, this is a ridiculous argument that's being put forward. And councillor Davis has not done anything except to point out some relevant facts here that show the hypocrisy of Labour. Mr Chair, I move the motion be put.
Seconded.
It's a procedural motion moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Those in favour say aye. Those who can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Johnson. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 7 against.
The motion is carried. Please back to the seat. Councillor Johnson, your right of reply.
Yes, firstly, I would just like to start by saying that none of this would have been necessary today if councillor Landers had simply done her job fairly and transparently and in accordance with the meeting's local law. It is her responsibility as a statutory office holder, under the meeting's local law, to ensure confidentiality is maintained. Councillor Landers has failed to do that. Councillor Davis stood up in here and blamed councillor Collier, said she was the person who had dobbed in these kids and blamed councillor Collier for notifying council about an issue of concern in her area. Now, as it turns out, like all of us do every single day, councillor Collier acted on behalf of a resident who contacted her. Now councillor Davis's appalling behaviour here, councillor-
Councillor Cassidy.
Councillor Davis is a-
Excuse me, councillor Johnson. Councillors! Councillor Johnson has the floor. Councillor Johnson.
Councillor Davis's appalling behaviour here was to blame a person for an action for which she did not personally undertake, but she acted on behalf of her residents. Now councillor Collier deserves, the same as any other citizen or resident of Brisbane, to have council treat their complaints on behalf of residents fairly, with discretion and under the proper laws and meeting rules and procedures. Now, that has not happened. It is, yeah, yeah. Is this what's, is this what's going to happen every time we make a complaint to residents?
Councillor Cassidy.
Is that what's going to happen? The LMP are going to blame us every single time? Councillor Davis's actions here are appalling. The only person who could have fixed this issue was the Chair of Council, councillor Landers. Councillor Landers is running a protection racket for LMP councillors and refused to even acknowledge the issue I raised as a point of order, even though the meeting's local law specifically make it clear she is responsible, councillor Landers is responsible for our confidentiality under the meeting's local law. Now, the simple solution to this would have been to remove councillor Collier's name from the minutes and the recording. It was a simple fix. But councillor Landers is so beholden to the LMP, is so, so under the thumb of the Lord Mayor and the LMP councillors that she is unable to carry out her statutory responsibilities. It is not acceptable that in Brisbane, any single resident should have their complaint publicised and published through this place, no matter who it is, unless they have given- no matter who it is, unless they have given their permission. Now, the council officers and councillor Davis who've undertaken these act for purely political purposes today should be ashamed of their behaviour. Councillor Landers, who's failed to uphold the meeting's local law and deal with the issue in a simple and sensitive way, should be ashamed about her behaviour. It lacks professionalism. It lacks any understanding of the meeting's local law, and it is not right. It puts at risk other residents who expect confidentiality from council. But if the LMP don't like what you say, it's fair game. It's on now. Any single thing you say to council, they can stand up in here and use. And that is wrong. And it is the Chair's responsibility to make sure that our meeting's laws and the Code of Conduct is upheld, and she has failed to do that today.
Now I put the motion of unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those who can say no?
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result. Councillors. Councillors. Clerk is about to read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
The motion is lost. Can someone advise the Chair to be back? Yeah, Madam Chair, there's no unsuitable meeting conduct. Please come back to the Chair.
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess it's okay to have a crack at me, but not okay for me to have a crack at anyone else.
Exactly right.
The hypocrisy is absolutely breathtaking. So, while the Shirena Council is providing world-class facilities for residents, including kids, those opposite across the chamber would rather just come and have a crack. Well, Madam Chair, Brisbane's reputation as Australia's lifestyle capital continues to grow. I'm very proud of that. And the Shirena Council continues to deliver for our residents in their suburbs, right across Brisbane, so that they can enjoy our wonderful outdoor lifestyle.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. That now ends question time, and we'll move to Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 19th of May, 2025. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 19th of May, 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 19th of May, 2025 be adopted.
Point of order.
Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Could I ask that item C be taken seriatum for debate and vote? And item D be taken seriatum for debate and vote? Which would be A, B, E and F together, and then C by itself and D by itself.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, we will move to A, B, E and F first, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I go on to the items, I just wanted to cover a couple of issues. First of all, I noticed that Labor councillors had submitted on the notice paper a motion relating to green bins that related to the upcoming budget. Now councillor Cassidy and his colleagues know that the budget submissions have closed, but, you know, it's a nice try on. And look, councillor Cassidy will have to wait until Budget Day to find out what's in the budget. But I can provide a little hint, okay? Can provide a little hint. What I can do is let councillor Cassidy and everyone else know for that matter is that we did recently place, actually, no, last year. Last year, we placed a very large order for green bins. And in fact, as part of that order, they've now arrived. We've got so many green bins that you can see them from space. And so, a table, Nudgie, a table, Rochedale, a table, Willawong, where there's so many green bins waiting to be delivered, that you can see them from space. So councillor Cassidy, you can put forward a pithy little political motion calling for something to happen in the budget after the budget submissions have closed, but you'll just have to wait until the Budget Day. Other than that, you might just have to get on to NIMNAP to have a look at those bins. So, that's all right. We know the games that are played here. We know that Labor will try and concoct some kind of, oh, we called for green bins to be rolled out and the LMP listened. It's like, yeah, nice try. Nice try. But that's okay. That's all right. You'll look forward to Budget Day with enthusiasm, I'm sure, councillor Cassidy. As we always do, we light up our assets to support important community causes. And on Monday, our assets were lit up. And when I say the assets, I mean assets like City Hall, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place and the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha. And on Monday, or yesterday, we lit up our assets in black, yellow, red, as well as green and blue for the colours of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags in recognition of National Sorry Day. This is the 28th anniversary of the Bringing Them Home Report in 1997, which marked the start of a journey that this nation has been on regarding the stolen generations. And it culminated in 2008 with the National Apology in Canberra. But every day, we remember the stolen generations. That generational trauma lives on. And just yesterday, in King George Square, we had our annual ceremony. Also, in many parts of the city, we also had other Sorry Day ceremonies as well, including, I know, in Winham, councillor Gibney, you were there, and other locations. Councillor Davis, you were also at the, was it Turalba Park? And also in the King George Square as well. So each year, we also make sure that we're prominently remembering the stolen generation and recommitting ourselves to reconciliation and to make sure that nothing like that ever happens again. Tonight, our assets will be lit up in rainbow colours for the eve of LGBTQ Domestic Violence Awareness Day, an event which council has been proud to support for many years, including hosting the Light Up the Night Gala, which was held here in City Hall on Saturday night. And councillor Howard informs me it was a fabulous night. And someone may have proposed to someone else alive on stage. And they said yes, didn't they? Yes. So that was a nice surprise for that wonderful awareness and fundraising event. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit up in maroon to support what councillor Gibney and what councillor Landers state of origin. Where obviously, we'll all be enthusiastically supporting the Queensland team, the cane toads against the cockroaches, and hoping for three wins in a row this time. But we'll all wait with bated breath for a wonderful game for first state of origin tomorrow night. On Thursday, our assets will be lit up in purple to support Darkness to Daylight, the annual fundraising awareness event led by Challenge DV, consisting of a 110-kilometre overnight run, a 110-kilometre monthly running challenge and a 10-kilometre and a 3-kilometre mass community participation event. And so, proud to be supporting that event as well. On Friday, City Hall will be lit red to support World MS Day. Every day, one or two Australians are diagnosed with MS, and three or four of them will be women. Three out of four of them will be women, sorry. Sadly, this is on the rise, and we need to do what we can to raise awareness and support the families of those living with MS. Also, on Friday, the Story Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place, will be lit red, white and blue to celebrate the Statehood Day or the National Day of Croatia. Statehood Day is celebrated on the 30th of May each year and commemorates the convening of the first Democratic Croatian Parliament in 1990, following the collapse of the Soviet Union. On Saturday, our assets will be lit in blue to celebrate the 33rd year of the Brisbane Marathon Festival. It's an event which attracts thousands of participants from 35 countries each year. It includes a 10-kilometre run, 5-kilometre run or walk, and a children's mini marathon of two kilometres. Some other news from the past week. I was able to announce that we are going to review the low-medium residential zoning in order to make sure we can support builders in building more homes sooner. And this is an important step forward to make sure there's choice in housing. Now, I've noticed some coverage of this suggesting there'll be tall buildings in the suburbs. This is not about tall buildings. We're talking about a zoning which currently allows two, three or four stories. And so, you know, we're not talking about large buildings here. But we are talking about the potential, if we make some changes to bring more homes on and provide more choice to people. And this is different to the low-density zoning. Low-medium density covers around 14% of the city. Low-density covers around 70% of the city. Is that correct councillor Allen? Yep, pretty close, give or two, maybe it's 72%. And we make no apologies for ensuring that low-density stays low-density. But low-medium density has always been an entirely different zoning altogether. Traditionally, low-medium density has delivered around 1,000 new homes a year, slightly over 1,000 new homes a year. But what we've seen in recent times with the feasibility issues affecting construction, increases in construction costs, and that's affecting the ability of builders to deliver homes on the ground. The number of homes in this zone has dropped in 2023 down to 445 new homes in a single year. And so, we want to see the level rise back to where it should be, up over 1,000 homes a year again. And so, we're looking to make some changes in consultation with the community to help get back to where it should be to deliver around 1,000 homes a year. That will give us the ability, if we get back to that level, to deliver up to 6,000 new homes in this zone between now and the 2032 Olympics. And so, it's just about making sure that that zoning works appropriately in the way that it has in the past, taking into account the current feasibility issues that builders have with delivering supply. If we don't, well, what we will see is that Brisbane will become increasingly more unaffordable. We'll see that demand will continue to exceed supply. And as I said at the event the other day where I announced this, there are some people that peddle simplistic solutions to the housing crisis. Some people peddle vacancy levies. Won't give you any points for guessing who peddles that. Some people peddle punishing landlords, running them out of town and taxing landlords and developers more. Now, those things might win a few votes, but they're simplistic responses to complex problems. And almost always where they've been tried, they make it worse. You don't tax your way out of a housing crisis. You build your way out of a housing crisis. And so, that's our response, to make sure that we can accommodate more homes being built. Taxes will not solve the housing crisis. Punishing investors will not solve the housing crisis. What that will mean is it will make it worse.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Seconded.
As we move for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon, all those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
And so, rather than doing what parties like the Greens do, and that is try to con people with those simplistic solutions that make the problem worse. See, they can say these things because they've actually never been in government to deliver any of them. And we need to prevent that from happening because there's one thing that's guaranteed to make the housing crisis worse, and that is some kind of Greens-involved government, whether it's a minority Labor-Greens government, whether it's a Green Labor Coalition of Chaos in the council here. That is guaranteed to make the housing crisis worse because their policies, their approaches are all about higher taxes, which just drive up the cost of housing for everyone. And so, we're taking a different approach. And we believe that the only way to get out of a housing crisis is to build more homes and to facilitate those investors, the builders, to be able to build more homes. The housing crisis will not be solved by governments building social homes either. We know that that represents only 6% of all homes in Australia. And even if you doubled the number of social homes, you still wouldn't solve the housing crisis. And so, there's got to be a holistic approach here. And to be clear, absolutely, state and federal governments need to really step up with the delivery of social and affordable homes. They do. It's part of the solution, but it is not the solution. Everywhere around the world where these Greens policies have been introduced, it has made the situation worse. And so, we will make sure that we get a review of low-medium density happening and involve community consultation.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Just a misrepresentation on where these Greens policies have been placed internationally and things have got worse. So I've got a couple of corrections.
I know your misrepresentation, councillor. That's all you can ask for? And then I'll call on you later to. And then I'll call on you later to speak on it. Lord Mayor.
I'm looking forward to hearing where taxing people more and adding costs to building homes is going to help. I'd be really interested to see that because I've yet to see anyone with any credibility provide evidence to that. But what we will do is we'll make sure that we can get some changes made in the low-medium density zone within 12 months, including community consultation, that will help bring the supply level up to where it should be and where it traditionally has been. Up from 445 new homes in 2023, we want to get it back up to over 1,000 homes in that zone, which has been the traditional level. May is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and yesterday, we had an incredibly important milestone. And I want to join together with my colleagues and particularly the deputy mayor, councillor Cunningham, and also the lady mayoress as well in giving our heartfelt thanks to Sue and Lloyd Clark and also Nat as well, their son. Because without their advocacy, I don't think anyone in the community would understand what coercive control was, let alone have a law that makes it illegal. They have driven this. They have turned what is the most gut-wrenching tragedy that any of us can imagine into something which can now help others. And from yesterday, it is now law. I want to pay tribute to the Small Steps for Hannah charity, of which councillor Cunningham is on the board and everyone involved in that. And I want to pay tribute to both sides of politics who have supported this legislation, both to the former Miles government who introduced it and also the current government as well for making sure that it's continued on and that it's law. This is an important step forward. It will certainly change the situation. It will certainly change the situation for many people experiencing domestic violence because they now know what it is that they're experiencing because of the awareness that Sue and Lloyd and Small Steps for Hannah has brought to it. But also, now that it's illegal, action can be taken. And we know that we have a state government who is serious about ensuring that action can be taken as well. We've got at the moment ongoing through our 33 council libraries and also water offices, the collection drive for Homeless Connect. And this is something that I know you've all been actively promoting, but it's something that's really important. We've got, in the lead-up to early June, that collection going on. And we're particularly asking people who are coming in to contribute canned foods, also toiletries as well, long-life foods as well. And that includes things like rice and pasta. It includes cereal and muesli bars and things that will have a bit of shelf life on them. And so, we appreciate everyone who's been involved so far, but there's still time to make your drop-offs. We've seen thousands and thousands of people supported through Homeless Connect. We've seen incredible results out of every event that we've held. And obviously, this is just one way that we're responding when it comes to homelessness and housing in our city. The Homeless Connect program that we run is something that we should all be very proud of, and I know that all councillors support. But it also adds into our work that we're doing when it comes to the Pathways Out of Homelessness program, a program which has helped many, many people come from homelessness into accommodation. And it also has helped them with the support that is needed to make that transition as well. And the way this program is set up, it's not just about a one-off grant, but it's about a funding program that goes over several years that provides wraparound support to get people out of tents and cars into accommodation, and then with the support that they need, supporting them as they make that transition, to make sure that they're not just bouncing back from accommodation into homelessness, but they have that support available to them. And so, we are proud to continue to support the Pathways Out of Homelessness program. I'm proud that that program was introduced by this administration. It didn't exist under previous administrations, and it's something that we're absolutely committed to. I'm also proud to see that we've seen some fantastic results from our efforts to get people out of tents and into accommodation. We've been working with the state government Critical Response Team, the Department of Housing team, and we have seen a great effort put into making sure that people are out of those dangerous situations and into accommodation. I also want to pay tribute to some of the great charities out there that are doing work, and particularly charities like Emmanuel City Mission, who really feel an important role when it comes to providing support to the most vulnerable in the community. It's interesting to see the role that the Emmanuel City Mission played during the recent Cyclone Alfred. They were able to house hundreds of people in their facility. And it just goes to show you what's possible with a bit of extra support. And so, we've been talking to the state government. We've been talking to others about making sure that they can get some extra support. At this point in time, I understand the only real support from any government that they've received is actually from the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust, where they've received a number of grants. But they have no ongoing state funding. They have no ongoing federal funding. But they can do so much, and they play such an important role. And we're working to make sure we can hopefully get them some more support as well. Because in the end, we don't want to see people left out as a permanent solution to be in tents in parks. That is heartless. That is uncaring. If you care, you want to get people out of tents, out of parks, and into accommodation. And that's exactly what our approach is. Moving on to the items in front of us. Item A is the lease-in operation of the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre. Councillors... Well, we're seeking council approval to provide a new lease agreement to Tennis Gear to continue operating the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre at Fruit Park in that great facility there. Tennis Gear has operated the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre for many years now and has done a great job. I know it's a very popular facility for the local community, who will no doubt be pleased to know that Tennis Gear will continue their tenure for another 10 years. As part of this new agreement, in front of the chamber today, we have been able to secure an investment from Tennis Gear to deliver capital improvements to the centre, including resurfacing all courts, replacement of the existing halide court lights with LED, sustainable, efficient lights, which will reduce electricity costs and carbon emissions. Residents will also benefit from a brand-new outdoor terrace, which will look fantastic and be very useful. The council has already invested millions of dollars over the years to turn Fruit Park into a cherished community space. It's hard to go to Fruit Park without seeing at least one or two celebrations in the park with playgrounds always full and busy with kids. And this new outdoor terrace will make Fruit Park even better.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair?
Seconded.
Has been moved by the deputy mayor for an extension and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Moving on to item B, which is similar, the lease-in operation of the Shaw Park Tennis Centre. It's... We're seeking approval to enter a new lease agreement also with Tennis Gear to operate the Shaw Park Tennis Centre. Once again, Tennis Gear have operated this site for many years, and they were the only applicant for this particular lease. Despite that, we've secured a far better deal for the ratepayers with Tennis Gear entering into a 15-year new lease that delivers increased revenue to council, which helps us keep costs down for residents. In addition to the increased rent in the new agreement, we've also secured a capital investment from Tennis Gear to resurface all the courts at the start, middle, and end of the lease term, an upgrade to the coffee shop area as well, and to create a brand-new experience for residents and visitors. And so, commend this item to the chamber. As I said, similar to the previous one. And moving on to item E. Item E is one of our election commitments that we made to trial new technology to help people move safely and smoothly and efficiently around the city. And this was something that would initially involve a couple of corridors, but then could be potentially expanded to other areas. And so, our commitment was to run a trial of the technology as a proof of concept. And then, at that point, we would make a decision on whether further use around the city was warranted based on the outcome of the trial. And we know that Brisbane is growing. We know that road upgrades and public transport infrastructure are incredibly costly. Capital upgrades are incredibly costly. And we also know that we can get significant better efficiency and traffic flow and people movement out of the network with better management of the network. Now, we saw that in its early stages decades ago with the introduction of adaptive traffic control systems. But that top technology is now old. It's now used pretty much in every city around the world. And whether they use the SCAT system that we use or a different system, adaptive traffic control systems are well-accepted, well-used to improve efficiency on the network. But what we have now is an opportunity to leverage the emerging technology that is growing around the world to up the ante when it comes to even more efficient management of the network. And what I'm talking about here is not just the efficiency of moving cars, but the efficiency of moving people. And so, using smarter technology, we can make sure we're moving people more efficiently. And so, if you've got a road corridor where you've got a mix of cars, buses, cyclists, pedestrians, there's a whole lot of technology emerging now that can identify the areas to prioritise and make sure we can move the greatest number of people more efficiently. And so, this particular SCP that we're putting out involves us procuring that technology and trialling that technology to maximise the use of our existing road infrastructure. So, it's about people movement. It's about safety. It's about how we can add to the existing network in a cost-effective way that can make a difference, not just to one corridor, but potentially across many major corridors. I want to thank councillor Wines for his leadership of this project. I want to thank him for getting it to this point. We're getting really excited now. I also want to thank Minister Mickleberg as well, the state transport minister, because we'll be working closely with the state government on this to see if there's wider applications. And obviously, if something, you know, works well or if there's a technology that can be used elsewhere in Queensland, that's a great thing for everyone. So, we'll keep working with TMR and Minister Mickleberg on those opportunities. But finally, item F is Major Amendment K. And this is to progress changes across a variety of different provisions relating to zoning, overlays, parks, industry, heritage, and planning scheme policies. Council resolved to prepare this amendment in 2019, which was followed by the required consultation process, state referrals, which went up to the state in 2022. Now, councillor Cassidy likes to wax lyrical about the housing crisis and about what's not being done, in his expert opinion. But I'll tell you what's not being done, or certainly what wasn't being done, prompt responses from state government agencies to quite simple requests. And this is a great example of that. So, this was sitting on the desk of the previous state Labor government for more than two years. And so, in a housing crisis, we're particularly interested in progressing this. And if councillor Cassidy wants to complain about timing and about what's not being done, this is a good place to start. Now, ultimately, this will include zoning changes to reflect current circumstances, such as property purchases under the Bushland Acquisition Programme, assisting in implementing key actions from the Brisbane Industrial Strategy, including changes to help deliver public parks. And it will incorporate site-based mapping changes to reflect circumstances like traditional building character overlay. And also, it will identify properties that have been removed through the Voluntary Home Buyback Programme. Now, this is one particular amendment package. We've had many others. But sadly, this tidiness when it comes to state responses is not limited to this particular package. We've had this experience time and time again over the years, and it certainly is not helpful when we need planning to be updated promptly. We need to be able to respond to the changing situation, and we need to acknowledge that we're in a housing crisis. And planning changes that are prompt and that are made in a quick manner, including with community consultation, are really important in this current environment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Massey, your point of misrepresentation.
Thanks, Chair. I think through you, the Lord Mayor said multiple times that the vacancy levy, which is only one part of Greens policy, has not been successful anywhere. And so, I will read a couple of places where it's been successful.
No, councillor. No, it's not for debate. Councillor Massey. Councillor Massey.
4.1 million.
Councillor Massey, it is not for debate. You just have to say where you were misrepresented. It is not for debate.
Let me table this so that the Lord Mayor can have a read of vacancy levies that have been successful across the world.
Further speakers on A, B, E, or F? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise to speak on these four items now. Starting with item A and B, I'll do them together because it's the same... Different sites, obviously. Same leasing that are being awarded to. So, both proposals at the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre at Fruit Park and also at the Shaw Park Tennis Centre at Wavell Heights are going to Tennis Gear, as we have heard, for 10 years and 15 years respectively. There is a bit of a concern, I guess, around people's willingness to take on these, what are leases of publicly-owned community sites, given one site had just one tenderer for that lease, and the other site had two, one of which was non-conforming. So, the existing leases were the only option council could go with. So, I'll go through some of the details. We've heard some of that from the Lord Mayor about what council will be getting and what the people of Brisbane will be getting out of these. But there is no competition about it. And so, I don't know, genuinely, is there an issue in organisations or businesses, running as businesses essentially, but running as organisations that are operating tennis centres and potentially other centres that need to turn a profit here? Is there a problem? Why do we only get basically one offer for each of these tennis centres that are going to be quite profitable to the leasing? You would expect, given the amount of income that council will be getting from them on a year-on-year basis, as well as the capital investments that they will be required to make in these two locations. So, as we heard, the leases include significant capital investment commitments from Tennis Gear. Roy Emerson fully resurfaced courts, upgrades the lighting to energy-efficient LEDs, new outdoor terrace, all at their own expense. Maybe we should lease the Story Bridge to Tennis Gear. They're obviously going to... Yeah. It could be any worse than what the LMP are able to manage there. So, it sounds like a great deal, right? Like Tennis Gear are able to put this enormous amount of capital investment into a publicly-owned site that they will then charge people to use. At Shaw Park, they're resurfacing the courts three times over the term of the lease, just 15 years, and revitalise the coffee shop area as well. It's popular. So, those investments, obviously, are going to enhance the facilities and the playing experiences of people who go there and reduce the financial burden on council at those sites. But the rent model also ensures council's going to receive a minimum income of 90,000 a year from Roy Emerson and 85,000 a year for Shaw Park, with the potential for more if the centres are more successful in their turnover. So, again, genuine question. Is there a problem in the process in attracting more people to operate these businesses, essentially what are commercial businesses really? When you look at the level of investment they have and the commercial operations they run there and the income that they generate for council? If it is so attainable for Tennis Gear, why is it not attainable for others to be even considered in the mix? In that, they obviously are very experienced, Tennis Gear, clearly, and community-oriented and do school programmes and all that sort of stuff. So, very, very successful. But why are they the only ones, I guess, is the question there. A very good deal for council, but an interesting conundrum, I think, going forward for leasing community sites that are very, very specific in their nature. Clause E, there was A and B, so clause E. When the Lord Mayor said councillor Wines had been in charge of this process, we should have known why it's taken 14 months. So, this before us today is something that apparently the Lord Mayor had really clearly articulated and was very well thought out, we were led to believe. Because this was his election commitment in 2024. At the start of 2024, he took this policy to the election and said, this was his plan to bust congestion. And he had this, it was all well-thought-out, well-designed, and he was going to implement this software upgrade to Brisbane's traffic lights post-election. Now, we had been wondering for a while why we hadn't seen any movement on that. It's now been 14 months since the election, presumably a lot longer since the Lord Mayor came up with this plan and had council officers design it because, you know, he has that ability to do that as the incumbent. He doesn't have to rely on external experts. He's got the entire council organisation at his fingertips to develop political policy leading into an election, right? So, obviously, he then, soon after the election, handed it over to councillor Wines, who's the person who's been overseeing the decay alongside the Lord Mayor of the Story Bridge, the one who's seen the cost blowouts and delays on Moghl Road, the scaling back and delays of the Beams Road Project, Chair, in our wards. We're seeing that scale back and delayed in the budget papers we'll be debating soon. So, clearly, giving this important project and what should have been the Lord Mayor's most important congestion project to councillor Wines was a mistake. So, what we see before us today is a $15 million proposal for the market to come up with ideas to improve traffic light sequencing in its most simple term. This has also been included previously in the Race to Gold document that the Lord Mayor released about the runway to the Olympics and how he's going to solve Brisbane's congestion crisis by this software upgrade on Brisbane's traffic light systems. There's a deadline, I guess, for the Olympics. But when you think about the time that's elapsed from announcement of this policy to election elapsed on, from announcement of this policy to election to now 14 months later, Brisbane's congestion crisis is getting worse. We're seeing report after report, story after story, about how council's road network and council's operated public transport, operating on those council-operated road networks, are grinding to a halt. So this is a crisis, and this does require some clear action. So the current system we have is obviously a sensor signal system, been in place since 2010. That's clearly not working in the estimation of the Lord Mayor. So we came up with a brand-new plan, well thought out, lots of detail. He had the answers. That's what he told people of Brisbane. He had the answers to upgrade the software on Brisbane's traffic light system. He committed that to them at the last election. And we have before us today a proposal to go to the market to ask people for ideas.
Yeah, so we didn't.
So clearly, he didn't have the answer. Clearly, it was a thought bubble. Clearly, he's going out to the market and he's searching far and wide across the world. You'd think, since 2010, so it's now 2025, that 15 years has elapsed since the last time that that software system had been upgraded in Brisbane. Does essentially what, you know, in theory, what the Lord Mayor wants it to do, being a sensor signal system, but it can't meet the demands of the enormous amount of traffic congestion that is placed on it each and every day. So the Lord Mayor is now just going to go out to the market to try and do a two-year trial, he's asking for, a two-year trial phase for a potential, a potential citywide rollout with a maximum contract term of 10 years. So, great, that's all good news if it works, but we're going to get a two-year trial solution out of this. So just imagine, 14 months have passed, congestion's gotten worse, the next few years it'll take for the Lord Mayor to try and ask anyone, anywhere around the world, if they've got any ideas to help him manage the worst congestion in Australia. And then he's going to trial that for two years and then maybe think about committing to a... The Olympics will be come and gone in the time that we see the results of this trial, given this administration's poor management of even the most basic projects when it comes to road infrastructure, even though this isn't even road infrastructure, this is IT infrastructure. But their track record on IT procurement's not much better, is it? We all remember HCL. We all remember the Tech One debacle, when this administration went into a process of seeking a software solution, and they had a sort of concept, they had a concept, but they didn't have any detail. And then what happened? We didn't get anything in the end. So this, you know, the LNP's cuts and chaos throughout the organisation, the Liberal National Coalition of Chaos over there, I don't think they're back together yet, are they? I think they're still in a state of constant chaos. The offer's in the mail, maybe. We just have very little confidence. We support the concept, of course, we think it's a good idea, but when you start to pare through the details and look through the tender document that the Lord Mayor is going to issue, it leaves you with a great sense of worry and dread. Not just for how congestion's going to be solved and dealt with at the Olympics as an event, as a standalone event in the months leading up to it, but just imagine what sort of city we're going to be left with if this is the rolled gold approach of the LNP here.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Councillor...
I move for an extension.
A second.
It has been moved by councillor Kim for an extension and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the Lord Mayor's grand plan is a software upgrade, and we wish him all the best, and we'll be supporting this today, but it's all on him to deliver. If in the next two years we don't see a vast improvement in congestion around Brisbane, he will have failed. He will have broken his promise in 2024, he will have failed. And as we lead into the 2028 election with the very short runway into the Olympics then, the Lord Mayor needs to be able to stand up and say, the one single policy he took to the previous election, which he promised, the one he took to the election which he promised would deliver an answer to Brisbane's congestion crisis, it better have worked for the Lord Mayor's political future. On clause F, the major amendment Brisbane City Plan, I liked how the Lord Mayor tried to preempt what I was going to say about this. He tried, but then I think he came a bit unstuck with the words then that he read and followed, because he said, this was a bad example of the previous state government taking a very long time during a housing crisis, holding up the delivery of housing, essentially, I'm paraphrasing there, but he basically said, during the midst of a housing crisis, it was bad for the previous state government to have taken so long with this package. And then he proceeded to read through a whole lot of amendments which were removing houses. Was removing housing?
Yes.
It was, you know, it's not a bad thing because it's about bushland acquisition properties, but removing those houses, houses that were part of the flood buyback, which are no longer in the housing market, removing those houses, rezoning things to either conservation or open space. So the Lord Mayor, he thought he was on the normal track of attacking Labour, that's his modus operandi, and accidentally got sort of sidetracked on this one. Because the amendment before us today, I agree with him, it's taken far too long. I think the chain was dragged at a state government level and clearly here at a council level. But the Lord Mayor, 2019 when it was started by the LNP, all the way to 2015, there's something gone seriously wrong here at council as well to have slowed down that process so monumentally. And it was back in 2020 that council resolved, and we all remember Lamb House, resolved to separate out the components of the TLPI, or the components that were the TLPI for Lamb House before its expiration to be protected, and that was fast-tracked as well. And so there was a request, obviously, from council at that point to fast-track that element, but what did the LNP ask for for the rest of this? We hear this time and time again, we hear it from councillor Allen and from the Lord Mayor, they come in here and say that the previous state government is big bad enemy, but they never say what actions they took. They say a time's elapsed of six years, and a time of three years here and two years there, another year there, but they never actually detail what actions they took. And so I suspect that at officer level, conversations were happening, but clearly it showed at a political level, we didn't have an advocate for our city in the Lord Mayor. Because surely, he would have remembered. He would have remembered the conversations he had and the calls he put in, and when he was up there, at his capacity as Lord Mayor of Brisbane, or Chair, the South East Queensland Mayors, or any of those capacities. He must have raised this at some point with a minister or with a premier or something like that. But maybe he forgot, maybe he didn't go to those meetings, maybe not. But it is good to see in this those properties that have been bought over previous years, as in a long time ago now, through the bushland acquisition levy, are being converted to either conservation or open space broadly to bushland, because that's what the bushland levy should be used for and what the bushland acquisition programme should be doing, of course, is preserving that bushland.
Buying it.
Buying bushland. Buying new bushland. We see that's a process that's occurred over the last 30-odd years here, up until very recently. So it's good to see amendments finally being finalised, where we see bushland that was purchased using the levy that is put onto people's rates each and every quarter, actually purchasing bushland. There's been a distinct trend away from that, unfortunately, under the LNP and here. So the package is very, very, even though it's called a major amendment package, when you take out the iconic Lamb House, what we are dealing with here today is not about housing supply, like the Lord Mayor made out. It really is tidying up a whole lot of use changes, purchases through different programmes, and some zoning changes as well. So this one is pretty straightforward, not what the Lord Mayor made out at all, for those councillors who are following along. I certainly hope they read through the documents we have provided, because obviously the Lord Mayor didn't, but we will be supporting this one today.
Ponevoda Chair.
Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney, that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Councillors, any further speakers on A, B, E or F? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just rise to speak to item F, our vision for a...
Ponevoda. Ponevoda.
I'd just like to also move that all items be compulsory items for voting purposes, please.
Voting, we can do that. Councillor Wines.
Our plan to have a step change in the experience of using our road network through an improvement in the system that manages our road traffic systems. I just want to respond early in my notes, just respond to some of the comments made by councillor Cassidy. Of course, I think the most important thing said by councillor Cassidy was, of course, his anticipation that Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinne would still be in that role in the 2032 Olympics. That's at the very heart of what he was saying, and that he, councillor Cassidy, would be in the position of professional critic and opposition for that whole time. And as we know, there are a few people who've spent more days as leader of the opposition than councillor Cassidy, and I'm very glad to see that he intends to stay in that role for many years to come. Long may it be, and I look forward to his continued role in that position for many terms. I think that this opportunity is really about what can be done to see a significant improvement in the operations of our transport system for all motor users, whether they be private motor vehicles, whether they be public transport, whether they be active transport users or pedestrians. Is there a way to improve how that system operates without concrete and vitamine? Is there a way that we can interact with traffic lights, their sequencing, the operations of the intersections, the predictive nature of the IT that sits behind that signage? Whether we can improve in real, both in real time and in a predictive sense, ways to manage traffic in a predictive and responsive way? Today is a great example. There was a police incident on Eagle Street. That police incident had echoes across the network. Many people were likely late to work today as a result of that. If we had a modern system that was predictive and responsive, without the requirement for individuals to intervene directly, that system could have been dealt with very, very quickly and addressed in real time. Can we have a system in place that responds and predicts and addresses these things at the level and speed of an AI computer? And so that is very much part of what we're trying to achieve here. Now, as councillors would well know, council currently manages more than 5,800 kilometres, linear kilometres road, with over 1,000 signalised crossings and intersections across 18 key traffic corridors. Now, we are working together with industry on how best to do that, and I can say that there has been a great deal of interest from the private sector in this. I note some criticisms that the SCP has come through today, but I must remind councillors that we did an industry launch last November, which was attended by hundreds of local and international representatives from a range of firms who deliver component parts of what we need. However, we have to, after working with industry, work with industry to get the best possible outcome, and this is the best way to do it, through the SCP we're presenting today, the Significant Contracting Plan. We will engage with the component people in the industry, some offer end-to-end options, but we want to be able to get a good price, we want to be able to get a product that does what we want it to do, and we want to see a network-wide benefit for all road users. So can I thank the many, many, many businesses, both local, national and international, who have engaged with us? When we did the industry launch, we had to time it in a certain point of day so that European and Eastern United States markets could participate in that day. And so it was actually at four in the afternoon to provide the best time for people to engage. They did. We've worked with them to get a system that is clear about what we want, that's clear about what can be provided, but also works with industry to get the best possible outcome for Brisbane. I look forward to seeing the outcome of this contracting plan, both in an administrative sense, but also importantly, to see the material uplift in the operation of our transport system that is part of Lord Mayor Schrinne's vision for getting you home sooner and safer on a safe and efficient road network.
Further speakers on A, B, E or F? Sorry, councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on ENCA, and if I get time, clause F as well. Okay, I'm speaking to the ENCA report, clause A, lease-in operation of the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre. This tennis centre and Frue Park are in my Paddington Ward. I have met with the owner and manager team of the tennis centre and know they will be extremely happy with the result to the renewal of their lease. The Roy Emerson Tennis Centre was opened in 2014 as part of establishment of Frue Park. After significant community-led campaign, both the park and the tennis centre were built on the site of the old Milton Tennis Centre. The iconic Milton Tennis Centre originally opened in 1915 with a seating for 7,000 people. It had 19 hard courts and four grass courts, and hosted eight Australian championships with 16 Davis Cup ties. I'm absolutely committed to this long tradition of tennis courts in our much-beloved Frue Park. There has also been a longstanding tradition of tennis court facilities in council parks, which I hope this council will continue. It is, however, disappointing that so many important community-owned facilities have been commercialised, so that they may be financially out of reach to many of our community members. Why do we have community facilities available on council public land that are as expensive or even more expensive than private commercial operations? The court fees at Roy Emerson are $40 per hour in the evening, higher than many other tennis courts with lights. My position and Green's policy is that council-owned facilities should provide free-to-access recreational opportunities. At least one or two of these courts could be available free of charge to local residents and children. I see young people and children, often two people forced to play on the faimula rebound wall, because they can't afford to hire the court. I'm voting in support of this lease, but we face a deeper systemic problem, where the LNP councillor are happy to commercialise as much of our council recreation facilities as possible, despite all the residents of Brisbane City already actually paying for these courts. I'm also speaking on clause F, major amendment package K. As usual, we have these major amendments to the city plan with no briefing to councillors, railroaded through the secret ENC committees with inadequate efforts by this LNP administration for democratic processes to ensure councillors are informed and made aware of the detailed changes. Does this LNP administration care about democracy? Absolutely not. The information sharing and debate process created by this LNP administration is a farce. Real democracy has left the house. Again, we find changes buried deep in this amendment, as we did for amendment 1B. Today, it's changing to zoning for six beautiful old character buildings very close to my ward boundary, which are part of my Tuon community. The amendment removes three properties on Silvan Road from the neighbourhood character subcategory. It also removes two other on Silvan Road in the same block from the commercial character subcategory. Previously, four of these properties had some protections via two different character overlays. Now they have one of these overlays removed. These are beautiful collection of six very historical old buildings that date back to the early 1900s, that are an important part of the character of the surrounding community. At least one of these buildings is probably pre-1911, even though it doesn't appear on the pre-1911 overlay. As this council knows, many pre-1911 buildings are not in the overlay, and any application to the council heritage team to add buildings to the pre-1911 overlay are required to have extensive historical research to prove their age. The council heritage team is not funded or directed to assist in establishing the age of historical buildings. The direct result of this is that Brisbane is losing many pre-1911 buildings that are being demolished by uncaring developers, who claim they... that are being demolished by uncaring developers, who claim they just didn't know the age of the buildings. Even if they get prosecuted, in a rare instance, it is obviously a defence to say the building was not listed on the pre-1911 overlay. I know this defence has been used before with very minor fines from the State Planning Environmental Court. Changing the zoning, which generally reduces protections that are already full of holes, will eventually allow for these buildings to be progressively moved from this site or gutted.
councillor Chong Hua, your time has expired. Further speakers. councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B and item F. Turning to item B, which is the lease-in operation of Shaw Park Tennis Centre. As the local councillor in the area, I'm well aware of the tennis centre and how it currently operates. It's certainly a very popular and vibrant centre. It's well-used by the community, and in fact, they are probably in a position where they'd love to have some additional courts. But nonetheless, it's a centre that's been operated by Tennis Gear for the last 15 years. They do a terrific job. Obviously, while the focus is around tennis, they offer food and drinks and seating. And so anybody who goes there, either as a player or a spectator, has a good experience. They also offer coaching, as you'd expect. So they are a real hub for tennis and activity. They're obviously within that wider Shaw Park sports precinct. They are big supporters of pickleball. I went there a year or two ago for a major event. So it's not purely about tennis, but certainly it's about racket sports. And they do a terrific job, and I'll be very keen to see how they go in years to come. Now, turning to item F, which is the major amendment K. As the Lord Mayor suggested, this is certainly a bit of an omnibus package with a lot of different elements to it. And just quickly going through the key elements, there was an audit of the emerging community zoneland, changing the zone from emerging community to low-density residential. There were changes to the public parks delivery. There was rezoning of bushland acquisition properties to reflect their new zoning. There's some changes to the heritage overlay code and the heritage planning scheme policy. There are updates to planning, design and construction methods for stormwater drainage. So quite a mixed bag. There were also a number of items that were actions from the Brisbane Industrial Strategy. And these were put in place to support large-format, high-impact logistics distribution uses. So this is obviously a growing need off the back of e-commerce, which is becoming increasingly popular. There was also an opportunity to provide appropriate non-industrial uses that support workers in industrial precincts. Additionally, there was support for the research and technology industries, which we are conscious of growing rapidly and need to ensure that we accommodate those industries across the city. Now, as the Lord Mayor suggested, this amendment began in 2019 and was interrupted through a number of different events, including COVID and some of the public consultation processes. So I did find it interesting that councillor Chong Hua used the word, the amendment was railroaded through. So something that was introduced in 2019, we're looking to finalise it today in 2025. It's a very slow railroading. And not to mention that this particular amendment has come through the council chamber here previously and has been subject to rounds of public consultation, talk to a planner session. So as I said, I'm just not sure how it could be reasonably described as being railroaded. Now, the package did obviously sit down with the state government for a couple of years. Councillor Cassidy said, well, why didn't you ring them? Well, the previous state government had some interesting approaches to planning. They would write to us on a Friday afternoon about changes that they were instituting in the planning regulations, which will come into effect the following Monday. So the state Labor government was not a collaborator on planning issues. And this particular one sat down there for a long time. We did go to the new state government and said, come on, guys, let's get this sorted. And within six months, we've been fortunate to receive it back to council for adoption. Now, with the approval to head towards adoption, there were some conditions associated with their support. Those particular changes were not considered significant in the context of the amendment. And accordingly, we will be progressing with the amendment, acknowledging those conditions. And I commend the amendment to the chamber.
Further speakers. councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I speak just on clause F, the city plan of the amendments to thereof. Just a couple of items, and I'm going to talk locally here, as I usually do. And the first one, of course, was the indoor sport and rec, which now be allowed in the low-impact industrial zone. There was a, I remember back, I suppose it was in my first term, that we had a gym opened up in one of those areas. And unfortunately, the owner of the building didn't indicate to the leasor that they probably would need to develop an application in order to move in because it was not within the allowable zoning. Unfortunately, they didn't, and after around about a year and a half, they were forced to close down, which was quite devastating. So with this amendment, it's going to allow that to happen. And I just think that's a great improvement, because a lot of those small industrial areas... I've got quite a few along Archerfield Road, actually. And a lot of them are vacant, right? And now with this change, of course, dance studios, I suppose, but gymnasiums and other types of sport and rec will be able to be populated in those areas now. There, I think this is a really good change, this amendment. And sadly, it came late for a number of businesses, I'm sure, right across Brisbane that had the same issue or the same problem that the one I had in Archerfield Road. The other thing, too, is that they've increased the gazebo size and shelter footprint from 50 square metres to 150 square metres, which I'm thinking that's a fairly sizable jump in size. It's big. Being that my office is only about 100 square metres, that's 50 square metres bigger than that. And I'm thinking, well, that's a huge shelter. But they do say shelter and they do say gazebo, because usually shelters and gazebos don't have sides on them. They're not enclosed, basically. So, yeah, I just thought that was an interesting increase in size, three times the size. So maybe we'll have to find out a bit more about that. It's the reason why they thought it needed to be increased in size so much. The other one that was really interesting to me was the fact that the sport and rec land rezoning will allow for community use, right? Not just club use or sports use, club sports, whatever, but community use as well. It is changing because we've had a community group that wants to occupy some space in sport and rec land in my ward, which we've been trying to negotiate. And with this change, it looks like it's now possible. It's now possible. So it's really good to see that included in this package as well. And I think I'll leave my comments there. Madam Chair.
Further speakers. councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on item E and item F, if I have the time. I want to begin by acknowledging the intent behind the smart suburban corridors, intelligent transport system proposal. It's to modernise our traffic management systems to reduce congestion and to improve safety through the integration of smart technology. And these are important goals. But we do need to ask, what kind of city is this system going to build? And who is it really for? Brisbane is growing. Our population is expected to reach 1.7 million by 2024. And congestion is already a daily frustration for many residents. Innovation is welcomed, but it also must serve a broader purpose. Because while public transport is currently affordable, it's still lagging and inaccessible to many parts of our city. Service frequency, coverage and infrastructure investment has not kept pace with the growth, particularly in highly rapidly densifying inner-city suburbs. And of course, in the changing face of the outer suburbs, too. We cannot AI our way out of congestion while continuing to underfund the shift to more sustainable transport models. Despite this promise of this system, it does focus entirely on vehicle movement. There is no clear commitment to how it will support freight efficiency, public transport priority or active transport safety at intersections. There is mention of integration with emerging technologies, but no assurance that this will directly support any sort of mode shift, a future mode shift. And we're seeing these mode shifts happen as we speak. It also doesn't support changes in climate and also street-level equity. We should be using smart system to prioritise buses to... Who, well, they, the buses, they are often trapped on our congested roads and running late. To detect pedestrian volumes to reduce emissions, not simply fine-tune traffic lights so cars can move a little faster, even though it is good for cars to move a little faster. But we should be doing it all. This is also a potentially very long-term contract, potentially up to 10 years, with an unknown and likely significant cost over life. While I welcome the trial's first approach, which gives us the chance to assess the viability under very real Brisbane conditions, a contract of this scale raises important questions. Will the system remain flexible as technologies evolve? Will council retain control of data, security and of privacy? And what will happen to that data? How do we avoid vendor lock-ins as we move towards a network-wide rollout? As elected officials, we have a responsibility to keep asking the bigger questions. Will this system improve outcomes for people who don't drive? Will it help make Brisbane more walkable, more connected and more livable? Or will it simply reinforce the car-dominated city that we already have? Chair, through you, if we are truly planning for a smarter transport future, then the technology must do more than make congestion tolerable. It must actually also help us transition to remove congestion. And it must help us transition to a more sustainable, more equitable and people-focused city. This is a significant project. Let's get it right. We support the first trial, but please, please, let's get it right. I did have a little bit of time. I'll make some short notes on item F, just to highlight, as everyone's already mentioned. This is a document that has been potentially in development since 2015 to 2019. The public consultation happened in 2021, and it was endorsed and put to state government, the ALP state government at the time, at 2022, and it's kind of sat there for a very long time. We are in dramatically changed environments. We are now in a deepening housing affordability crisis. Neighbourhood planning, which was one touted as a tool for local land use change, has effectively been discontinued. And of course, the state government for my industrial areas has taken over the core as a PDA through the priority development areas. While I understand that this amendment has sat on the desk for a very long time, it is stated, and there are challenges with it. I wish I could talk more about that, but I'll leave it there.
Further speakers. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. And I rise to speak on items A and B, which is seeking council's approval to provide new lease agreements for the operation of the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre, item A, and the Shaw Park Tennis Centre, item B. Tennis Gear Proprietary Limited has operated both facilities for many years. And we've heard that the Roy Emerson won since 2014 and the Shaw Park since 2009. So a considerable period of time on both those sites by the incumbent. And of course, there was a competitive tender process, Madam Chair, which is what happens every time we have a facility that is ready to go out for tender. So anybody is welcome to, of course, submit a tender. But of course, running tennis centres is a fairly unique type of operation. And so we're very thrilled to know that Tennis Gear Proprietary Limited, who has done an excellent job and is well-respected in the industry with significant experience in all facets of tennis operations, was successful. They have demonstrated their capability in delivering an extensive range of services to the tennis community and provide a range of programmes and services that are tailored to local community demographics, including contributing to council programmes like the GOLD programme for residents over the age of 50 who love to grow old and live dangerously. In addition to their structured competitive formats, they also provide introductory sessions for people new to tennis or pickleball and provide flexible court hire options, supporting casual and organised play across the community. Item A will allow Tennis Gear to continue this good work at the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre over the next 10 years whilst delivering an increase in the annual base rent to council of 16%, as well as securing new capital investment from Tennis Gear to replace the existing halide court lights with 500 lux LED lights to improve electrical efficiency, resurface all tennis courts before the sixth year of the lease and create a brand-new outdoor area to provide a warm social space for players and residents to enjoy the beautiful Fruit Park. Item B is also seeking council's approval to enter into a new lease agreement with Tennis Gear to operate the Shaw Park Tennis Centre. Even though Tennis Gear was the only applicant for this tender, we were still able to negotiate a far better deal for ratepayers with Tennis Gear entering into a new 15-year lease that delivers increased revenue to council with an increase in annual base rent of 100%. In addition to achieving increased revenue for council, we have also secured capital investment to resurface the courts on three occasions during the term of the lease, contributions towards an annual preventative and/or corrective maintenance programme, and capital investment in works to create a new outdoor customer experience space. As the Lord Mayor said, the new outdoor space will be absolutely stunning, creating new spaces to enjoy coffee outside in the shade whilst watching the next Ash party hit out a set on the courts. It will be another really beautiful space for the community to enjoy. This will be a wonderful addition to Shaw Park. And as councillor Allen said, he's looking forward to joining Tennis Gear to welcome residents to the new and improved outdoor area once completed. Chair, both items A and B deliver a better deal for ratepayers by securing a better rental rate to council, which helps us keep down the pressure on rates. Both of them are creating more to see and do in the suburbs by delivering brand-new community spaces for residents to enjoy, fully funded by the private sector, which means ratepayers don't have to foot the bill for the upgrades. And yet another example of why residents chose to back the Schrinner council at the last election, because they know that none of this would have been possible under the Labor-Greens coalition of chaos. Chair, I commend items A and B to the chamber.
Further speakers. councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on, well, all of the items, if I have time. But I want to start with items A and B. I won't be supporting these items today, and that's not because of any problem with the current lessor, Tennis Gear. I listened to what councillor Chong Hua said and appreciate that she knows it's in her area and obviously the other ones in councillor Allen's area. However, councillor Howard's statements here today are shocking. Councillor Howard seems to think that the commercialisation of council tennis courts is a good thing. Now, she says all of these things could, sorry, councillor Howard says all of these things could only happen under an LNP council. And that only happen because of the action that this LNP administration is taking today. What this council is doing today is locking in long-term leases to a commercial provider, which is going to increase revenue to council, which is... which is by 16% and then, I don't, 100%, I thought she said for the other one. It's also within the money that is going to come from Brisbane residents. When councillor Howard says, oh, it won't cost the city anything, it's costing Brisbane residents. They're going to pay $40 an hour for a court now. In two or three years, it'll probably be $50 or $60 an hour. Now, the true cost of the commercialisation of this city's public assets is being laid bare by this administration here today, and I do not support it. It's happening in our pools. When it costs $6 or more to swim at a council pool, something is wrong. Our facilities should be free or low cost for the community. Council should be investing in the capital investment in these areas and keeping those prices down. Because Tennis Gear is going to make a profit. They're going to pay for all this new infrastructure. And the people who are paying for all of this are the people of Brisbane. And there are many, many, many people who will miss out because it costs too much to go to a council park to have a hit with a tennis ball. I think this council should be ashamed of the way in which it is going about commercialising council facilities. It is excluding people in Brisbane from having a hit. It's wrong. It is wrong. And it is the same at the pools. Council is seeing these leases as cash cows. They're seeing it as a way to deflect their responsibility for maintaining council land and doing it at a low cost so that everyone in Brisbane can enjoy public facilities. And this is pricing people out of the market. Now, the only good news that I can see, particularly in somewhere like my area, every school in my area has got a tennis court and it costs about $10 or $12 to hire. So I just say to the people of Brisbane, this council is ripping you off. This LNP administration is ripping you off in the use of public facilities. And the way in which they are doing this is by commercialising these leases that embed huge profits for the lessor and get them to pay for all the capital by passing on the cost to the end user. This is wrong. This is the wrong way to run the city. People should first be thinking about how do we make facilities available for our community, either at a low cost or free. And yes, there is a cost to improving facilities, without question. And they do need to be improved. We can see what happens. Maybe the Lord Mayor is going to lease out the Story Bridge and the private sector will fix the Story Bridge for us, because he's not fixing that asset. And meanwhile, what he's doing here is giving Tennis Gear a licence to print money that is costing every single person in Brisbane to go and use a public facility. Now, that's not a reflection upon Tennis Gear. This is the way the deck has been stacked by the Lord Mayor and his LNP cronies who simply want to rip money out of our public facilities. This is not a good way to run them. In the lead-up to the Olympics, the one thing this city needs is free or low-cost access to public facilities so kids can go and play. Kids that can't afford $500 a year in their local sporting club or can't afford to pay for thousands of dollars of tennis coaching. Kids who have great talent and ability but may not have anywhere to play.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? No further speakers, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly in summing up, well, that's been a fascinating rewriting of history there. Because the councillor who used to be a Liberal and believe in the free market and what it can deliver to supplement the role of government suddenly has become a Green. And it obviously believes that everything-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Number one, Madam Chair.
No, councillor Johnston.
Oh, okay. Well, my first point of order, Madam Chair, is claim to be misrepresenting.
Thank you.
Okay. And point of order, Madam Chair.
I know your claim of misrepresentation.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
The rule is you should refer to councillors by their official title.
If they're referring directly to you.
Well, I think he was. And I'm not a member of any political party, as the Lord Mayor knows quite well.
That councillor Johnson is not for debate, thank you. Lord Mayor.
Some people don't have as long a memory as me, but I do remember when councillor Johnston advocated for a former company that she worked for to get the contract as a sole-source tender to build the Legacy Way Tunnel. Yeah, would that be a commercialisation of a council asset? Look, the reality of this is really simple. There's a fundamental question here about the level of funding that's available to local government, which is three cents out of every tax dollar. And that means that we can't do everything. We simply can't do everything. We can't do all of the things that people would like us to do with three cents out of every dollar. So how do we keep costs down for ratepayers and make the dollar go further? We make sure we enter into partnerships. Now, the example of Frue Park, that was built and funded by the ratepayers of Brisbane. So the facility was created. That's the contribution that all ratepayers have made. And ultimately, though, there should be a contribution from the specific people who use the facility. There should be, absolutely. It's that fundamental principle that if you're a regular user of a facility, why should everyone else have to pay for your use of that facility? Yes, we've all helped create a facility. But this is the way that we drive the council three cents out of every dollar further, by making sure that we leverage those partnerships. And there's also the misnomer that, we heard the quote used, that apparently this is a licence to print money. Well, look, community tennis operators are not billionaires, okay? This is fundamentally a business which provides a great service to the community. But in the end, what we've ensured through this is that a good chunk of those profits go back into upgrading and improving the facility, which is exactly what we made clear. And so there's been a lot of misinformation peddled about this. Now, I know there are some councillors that have an ideological problem and they love to talk about the commercialisation of council assets. Well, the public votes with their feet. And they continue to use these assets and there continues to be strong demand. Now, I remember certain councillors railing against another commercialisation of a council asset. And that was called Howard Smith Wharfs. And so it is the most popular precinct in Brisbane. It involved it involved significant private investment in that precinct. But people absolutely love that precinct because they see it as adding to the lifestyle of Brisbane. Now, if that was up to council to fully fund a precinct like that, it would never have happened. And by the way, it wouldn't have been the same either. I don't know if you noticed, but we don't build restaurants and bars of that nature. And so for for this commercialisation of what is a public asset to be such a great legacy, you know, they won't mention that, will they? Because that is a sort of partnership which sees Brisbane getting better and better, more to see and do, much-loved precincts being developed. And like I said, this is fundamentally about making sure that the three cents in the dollar of taxes that people pay go further and that we keep rates low. And the other thing that those partnerships allow is for us to have the cheapest rates in South East Queensland. Not by a little bit, by a lot. The last time I checked, there was at least a $250 gap between the rates that we pay here as residents and the rates that the next cheapest council pays. $250. But I suspect that gap will widen even further in the coming weeks because we have heard other councils talking about the financial pressures they're under. There's even been councils with Labour mayors that have been talking about the financial pressures that they are under. And so the reality is all councils are struggling to make that three cents in the dollar go as far as it needs to go.
Your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Second. Okay, thank you. Councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Lord Mayor has misrepresented me by standing up and claiming that I was a Green. Obviously, my speech related to the adverse impacts of the Lord Mayor ripping funds out of residents of Brisbane to pay for the revenue raising he's conducting through this leasing process.
Thank you.
That certainly is my opinion and I'm not a member of any political party.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item E to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item F to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors. Division. Sorry, who called that one first? Councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favour and three abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now move to item C. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Item C is the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report. Are we doing C and D separately or we are?
C separately, yep.
Okay. Okay, so this is for the period ending March 2025. And so obviously, we've got another document coming through next, which is also a financial report, which is what we normally, or we used to refer to as the third budget review. This particular report outlines our progress against the budget handed down last June. And clearly shows that our approach to making sensible savings, reducing expenditure to keep the pressure down on ratepayers is working. And we were very upfront about this approach in the lead-up to the last election. Labour was very upfront about our approach too, in their advertising campaign and spent $1.7 million telling everyone about our approach. But I think in the context of the fact that everyone in their own household budgets, everyone in their business budgets were making adjustments and reducing their expenditure, given the cost pressures that everyone is under, I think most people understood that this was the right and responsible thing to do. Because in the end, if you don't rein in your spending, if you don't reduce your spending in a time of high inflation, where you've got increasing costs of construction, increasing costs of services, all you do is you put upward pressure on rates and you force the cost on future years. And as councillor Cunningham pointed out in Question Time, we saw the opposition parties, the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, go to the election with $3.5 billion worth of unfunded, uncosted policies. And that would have seen a 20% increase in spending, over and above where it was. Our approach was the exact opposite. And we in fact said we would have a 10% reduction in spending. So you've got a 30% difference there between those two approaches. They wanted to see a 20% increase in spending. We said we would have a 10% decrease in spending. And we made it very clear and we were upfront with people about what we were going to do. So this indicates that the approach to reducing our spending continues, to keep costs down, continues. But having said that, we're able to continue to deliver the things that we've committed to the people of Brisbane on. Today's report shows that while revenue is on track with budget projections, council is progressing well against our almost $1 billion capital programme for this financial year. So as of the end of March, $628 million had been spent across the city on capital works. And that includes a whole range of things, including launching the newest double-decker city cat into service, obviously planning and introducing the Turn Up and Go Brisbane Metro, which we trialled late last year with the 169 trial. And then we saw the M2 services start on the 28th of January. We've seen well over 1 million passengers catch that M2 metro so far. Also, we've continued to provide 14.1 million free off-peak trips for Brisbane seniors on our buses and ferries since October 2019. We have finalised the removal of the notorious Mogal Road roundabout at Endrupilly with the new Mogal Road corridor upgrade. And it's great to see that project now finished and being well-received and creating a much better safety outcome as well. It's also been great to see the improvements when it comes to pedestrian access and cycling and a lot of positive outcomes there. That obviously supported by the federal government with a sizeable contribution from the federal government. Also, we've completed one of the stages of the Beams Road in one of our city's fastest-growing areas. And obviously, we're looking forward to getting on with future stages. But there's been a lot happening. Investments in Brisbane's lifestyle continue, like the construction of playgrounds at the Winham Waiting Pool Park, Glinderman Park, which was mentioned before. Great facilities for young kids that want to get out and get on the bike and do some jumps. There's those facilities being built. And also, more than 89% of our $4 billion budget is being invested in the suburbs. And so that's all about keeping our commitment, where we said at least 80% of the budget will be invested in the suburbs. In recent years, it's been 86, 87%. Right now, it's up to 89%. We'll continue our approach of carefully managing council's expenditure. We will continue where possible to reduce expenditure because that is about reducing the pressure on ratepayers. This is not our money. This is ratepayers' money. And if we spend more, it just means that ratepayers have to pay more. There's no magic pudding here. And while we will continue to make sure that we get appropriate support from the state and federal government, we'll also continue to work very hard to make sure that we manage the money responsibly, that people contribute through their rates. And this particular financial report shows that we're doing this. I just wanted to touch on something that I mentioned briefly before that relates to budget management. That is, the discussions that I've had recently with other councils in South East Queensland, with councillor mayors and through other forums. There is not a single council at the moment that is not under significant pressure. And the reason for that is really... Did I hear some interjections? I don't know. It's interesting because there's a political narrative that's put out about this council. It's interesting, because there's a political narrative that's put out about this council, but I wonder if that same narrative would apply to other councils that are experiencing financial pressure. It's quite interesting, because we've seen other councils under significant financial pressure. It's not that hard to understand why. The costs of everything that councils do have increased far and above what rates have increased by in the last few years. It's as simple as that. And so whether it's cutting the grass, building footpaths, resurfacing roads, building major projects, all of those costs have increased by double-digit amounts, sometimes 30%, 40%, 50%. And certainly, rates have not increased by anything like that. And so it's not hard to see why all councils are under significant financial pressure, and particularly given that we receive three cents out of every tax dollar paid by Australians. But if you look at the situation just to our south, we saw some social media posting from the Mayor of Logan just in recent times, and he was talking about how his council was under significant financial pressure. And credit to him, because just like we did before the last election, he was being upfront with his residents about the pressures that their council is under. Now, Logan has a budget of around $1.2 billion. Their surplus went from around $20 million to just $1 million in recent months. Now, when you've got a $1.2 billion budget, to have a surplus of just $1 million, obviously I can understand why the mayor is concerned, but you know, whatever the opposition might want to say about this council, we've never had a surplus of $1 million. We always run a balanced budget, but we always keep that surplus as a buffer zone for unexpected shocks and expenses. And guess what? Those unexpected shocks and expenses always come. And so it's why you run a surplus budget. It's why you have that buffer zone, and we'll continue to make sure that we spend less so that we can run a balanced budget with a small surplus, a surplus that gives us the ability to deal with those unexpected shocks. And already this year, you know, we've seen the impacts of unexpected events. I don't think anyone predicted that this year we would experience a tropical cyclone, and certainly while the damage could have been worse if it was a stronger cyclone, there's still a significant damage bill and impact on council. And we'll continue pursuing the funding from the federal and state government on that, but there's no guarantees that we can get that. As we've heard, they won't retrospectively approve work. They may in fact refuse our applications for funding support, and so we'll continue working and advocating on that part, but we'll continue our commitment to keep rates as low as possible, to run a balanced budget, and to make sure that we keep costs down for residents and ratepayers.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. And quite extraordinarily, we just had this strange, almost surreal experience sitting here, listening to the Lord Mayor critique himself just now. He just spoke for 10 minutes lecturing us to say that 14 months ago, at the council election, he said spending had to be cut, but the budget was handed down 11 months ago after that election, of which the Lord Mayor, clearly using his logic, built in too much spending, then was required or needed, or that could be afforded, I guess, and he's now had to make cuts. Now, he calls them sensible savings, that's his rhetoric today, but he has admitted that if he uses his own logic and trying to soften up the situation, that he is making cuts to his own budget because somebody, unbeknownst to him, put too much expenditure in his budget. Who would that be? Oh, him. He did. So if we use his own logic, he's running this monumental battle at the moment against himself. That's all I took out of his speech just then, because he said this, and he said it consistently, Chair, over the last, since 2023 anyway, in the second half of 2023, of which he had to make those cuts some, I think it was 11 or 12 weeks after the 23 budget, because according to him, he got the budget wrong, and according to him today, the budget is wrong, that he delivered. So it's really quite extraordinary that we've got the Lord Mayor standing up today, saying that he needed to reduce the spending that he himself proposed, just 11 months before, and it's a tough decision he has to make, very, very strange Twilight Zone-type stuff that we have here. But we shouldn't really go off what the Lord Mayor says in the council chamber, because it's really quite strange, the things that he says in here. What we need to go off is what's in the papers before us today. That's all that we can go off as councillors, because if we tried to follow the Lord Mayor down the rabbit hole that he's down in at the moment, we would get very lost. So if we just stick to the facts before us today, instead of the Lord Mayor's fairy tale, what we see before us in clause C, the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report for up to the end of March this year, is a pattern of delays, cost shifting, clever accounting, and underspending on basic infrastructure that residents see around them every day of the week out in the suburbs. Now, we know that the LNP Coalition of Chaos is taking the people of Brisbane for fools, but we know that those people are increasingly seeing through the Lord Mayor's rubbish. Now, all through this report, and it's really easy to calculate as you go, we see these massive cost shifts happening at the end of the March quarter, from capital to operating expenses. So we have the council robbing Peter to pay Paul in the papers before us today. And the report confirms for us what we already knew, that under this Lord Mayor, who's done a runner now, and his LNP regime, that there are project delays on every single page. We know that that means when they're shifted into the next financial year, they're often no longer delays, they then become cuts entirely. So what we see in there in delays, delays to projects coming to fruition, is Mogul Road, Beams Road, and Brisbane Metro, all flagged as below budget due to timing. And it was an interesting question that councillor Wines took in question time earlier today about Beams Road, and he said a lot, a lot of words in that response, but some of the important ones he forgot to mention, Chair, and you'll appreciate this too, of course, because the Beams Road project is in the Brackenridge Ward as well, is that that project has now been both delayed and cut. Now, I'm sure you received, Chair, the briefing that, a similar briefing that I received a few weeks ago, to confirm that key elements of that project have now been cut entirely, including the intersection upgrade of Beams and Hanford Road. That's not just been delayed, that has now been cut entirely from the project. And the project team said that maybe if there's some more money allocated in a future council budget, or maybe if there's more federal money on the table perhaps, that that council road project can come back online, but that is a cut. So what we see here is some clever covering by answers we see from LNP chairs, and a document here that's in tricky accounting terms covering as well, trying to hide the fact that the money that should be spent on building things, like building footpaths and resurfacing roads and providing basic services that ratepayers expect, is all being reclassified. In Transport for Brisbane, there's reallocations for the bridges for Brisbane and Active Transport Infrastructure Fund. In infrastructure, we see the same shift from capital to expenses with the bridges and culverts reconstruction and stormwater infrastructure projects. And this should be ringing alarm bells for all those councillors out there who are experiencing flooding in their wards. And in Lifestyle and Community, we see that community assets from the 2022 floods are still unfinished, with money shifted out of capital into expenses as well. And that's all nothing, of course, but clever accounting to try and balance the books, so the Lord Mayor and his team can say there's nothing to see here, it's all on track, which is the rhetoric we heard just before from the Lord Mayor, even though the real physical work is being delayed, now communities are not seeing promised upgrades. Now, what this means, of course, is less money is actually being spent on infrastructure around Brisbane. What we get from the Lord Mayor is the rhetoric saying that he is spending billions of dollars on infrastructure, but in fact, what they're actually just doing is writing off and depreciating assets as expenses. It's an absolute con. Now, in accounting terms and in a budget term, that is an expense, so there's the income, and then the expenses, of course, and capital, and then other finance expenses come out of that as well. So we hear this rhetoric from the Lord Mayor, and just dwell on this for a moment, that there's these billions of dollars, and he often says it's a $4 billion budget, but what we find in here, and has been increasingly the case, Chair, is that the Lord Mayor and the LNP regime is shifting more and more of that expenditure from capital projects, from building the city that we need for tomorrow into expenses, depreciating the old assets that are in desperate need of replacement. So we're seeing a decline in services, we're seeing less services delivered by council staff, because we now have nearly 500 less council staff here in council today than we did 18 months ago, and we're seeing less delivered in terms of projects out in the community. Now, if councillors were to take a weekend drive, and I'm sure they will as they get around the city and go to events, you'll see potholes popping up all over the place, plugged with cheap fixes instead of road resurfacing, and we see some answers to Kwanzaa to show how many are still outstanding. Broken play equipment, shade sales still drooping on playgrounds, some 10 weeks after the cyclone in Forest Lake, in New Farm, and Brighton, and in other places as well. Parents with prams in New Farm having to detour on the road because damaged footpaths with orange council netting around them stays in place. Streets in Tinglepa, of course, and Brighton and Mywood still flooding because of the promise. Stormwater upgrades keep being pushed into the never, never. In fact, the money that should be allocated to capital expenses in that programme has now magically been shifted into expenses. So residents are seeing the neglect, absolutely. They don't see the spreadsheets, and quite frankly, to councillor Cunningham through you, Chair, we can sit here and cop all the lectures, that's fine, but residents don't care about the spreadsheet. What they want to see is action on the ground. They want to see a council that's actually committed and dedicated to building Brisbane, not just shuffling numbers on a spreadsheet so they can send it up to the Queensland Audit Office and say everything's squared off in the end, expenditure was made based on the revenue that came in, but they don't tell the full story, that they're not actually building things anymore. Year-to-date depreciation and amortisation now sits at $370 million, almost two-thirds of the claimed infrastructure spend. Just think about that for a minute, two-thirds of what the LNP claim they are spending on infrastructure, as in building roads, building drainage, building footpaths, two-thirds of that is being spent depreciating old assets.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
I move for an extension.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Kim and seconded by councillor Strunk for an extension. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So, you know, council trumpets in these documents as well, the expenses of $2 billion, but 370 million of that is simply writing down the value of aging roads, pipes and drains. So far, so far, as at the third quarter, there's still another one to come this financial year, which we will see, I guess, when the annual report is produced, after budget, after budget. So when the Lord Mayor says he is investing $3 billion in infrastructure, just remember, a big slice of that is a desktop and paper depreciation on assets built by earlier councils. Now, sure, some of it will be assets that were built by the LNP, because they've been in power for 21 years now, over 21 years, I'm sure they're on to depreciating the assets that were built by Campbell Newman. But when we're seeing figures creeping up to at the third quarter, you know, creeping dangerously close to half a billion dollars in depreciating old assets instead of building new ones, that should be alarm bells for everybody. So if the LNP regime, Chair, was making a genuine investment, we would see money kept in the capital column, of course, and depreciation wouldn't be the ticking time bomb that it is becoming under the LNP, seeing aging assets stretched beyond their usable life. Story Bridge, anyone? It's all sounding very, very familiar, isn't it? So after 21 years plus that the LNP has been in power, we see that they really have fundamentally given up on basic service delivery in the suburbs of Brisbane, and the renters and ratepayers of Brisbane are paying for that. Every one of the LNP councillors that sits on that side of the chamber will just sit there and they'll accept what the Lord Mayor tells them they need to accept, but that's not what we were elected to do. We, you know, to quote and to paraphrase councillor Cunningham, we have statutory obligations to ask questions, to seek information, to make sure that what we are delivering as a council collectively here today and at budget time is in the best interests of the ratepayers of Brisbane. I have never once in 10 years seen an LNP councillor get up and ask a single genuine question about the council budget, and whether that expenditure is in the interests of the people of Brisbane. Have any of them ever asked the question about why we are seeing hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars being shifted from capital to expenses in one single quarter? It's just radio silence over there. They never get up and ask that. Can you imagine, imagine those people that live down in Tinglepa, on Boundary Street there, near the Winham Wolves Football Club, seeing their houses flood rain event after rain event after rain event? And they would probably think their councillor is doing the best job in coming in here and advocating and banging on the table, seeking capital investment in drainage infrastructure in that area. Imagine when they find out that in fact, that councillor is just one of the many LNP councillors who provide a rubber stamp to whatever the Lord Mayor wants to do. And in this case, it's shifting generational amounts of suburban investment funding out of projects into expenses to just depreciate and to carry on old, lagging, failing infrastructure out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Brisbane can't take very much more of this coalition of chaos that we now know as the LNP. They don't like it, do they? They don't like it when, you know, when their foibles are pointed out. They don't. They don't. They like to talk about election results. I mean, the Lord Mayor likes to talk about an election that was three elections ago. They don't like to talk about the result of the most recent one. But their party is in chaos, decay and decline, and when they're part of a party that, you know, in parts of Brisbane now, after, you know, their highs of having a 40-something percent primary vote at the last council election, to slipping to have a primary vote in the mid-20s, just 13 months later.
Councillors, don't call out.
We see that their party is in serious decay and serious decline, and that's reflected in the work they're doing here in council, because their party is hollowed out, they no longer have a membership that reflects the communities in which they try and represent. And when parties go through that kind of decline, you see the decisions they make no longer reflect the communities that they represent. And it is all coming home to roost for the LNP. They think they're high and mighty, they think they're untouchable. But when you continue to make decisions like this, and people see that, you know, the Story Bridge is a great example of that, isn't it? As emblematic of the kind of long-term administration and decline in their commitment to delivering for the people of Brisbane, that's a great example, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of little examples like the Story Bridge all around Brisbane that people are really starting to notice now. And the Story Bridge has shone a light on that, and the people of Brisbane, if they had access to information and had councillors on that side that were open and transparent with them, would realise that sooner, but over the next three years, the LNP are going to find out that the decisions that they are making here are going to have a real impact on their electoral prospects in 2028. And... Uh, and, uh, let's not forget these decisions today and the decisions the Lord Mayor will make in the next budget are political decisions. Uh, because under the City of Brisbane Act, it's all very clear. Uh, our job is to be in here and to hold the Lord Mayor to account on these financial discussions and decisions. Uh, but it is the Lord Mayor's legacy and the Lord Mayor's responsibility to deliver budgets and, uh, infrastructure and, uh, uh, and expenditure across the city. Uh, and he is failing really badly and, uh, we will continue to point that out and we, of course, won't be supporting this item today.
Further speakers. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C of the E N C report as it relates to, um, transport. And, uh, this item continues to demonstrate, uh, in the annual operational plan that we are making a significant and ongoing investment into the transport infrastructure of, uh, this city while we continue to deliver a high level of operational performance on the bus network as it is today. So, uh, during ex-tropical cyclone Alfred, uh, T F B was extremely proactive and agile in their decision-making, as we just found out, uh, from the review into the actions during this cyclone, uh, in making decisions about the suspension and resumption of bus and ferry services. Naturally, given the extreme weather conditions, uh, metro works were paused for a brief period during this weather event. The report, uh, reflects that reality. But as I touched on earlier, our works, uh, continue to, to progress. The refurbished Burundi Busway Station has received, uh, rave reviews from passengers and the drivers above it alike. Now that O'Keefe Street is reopened, uh, Cultural Centre Station Platform Three is due to open on Monday, which will allow drivers to get used to the change prior to the 30th of June, when metro services will commence. Uh, the Adelaide Street Tunnel works are progressing well, as outlined in the report. It remains on track for completion in quarter three of 2025. Uh, new metros continue to arrive ahead of the introduction of M1 on the 30th of June. And, um, of course, public transport is not the only form of transport we've been focused on. We've got the new safer schools precincts, uh, project, which is now really starting to gather ahead of steam, uh, and is proving very popular with local communities following, um, the fantastic engagement in Kedron. We now, uh, have just wrapped up consultation in Mansfield, which will help shape those future improvements. And across our ferry network in particular, uh, our patronage is growing, Madam Chair. Uh, as you see in item C, uh, there in the report, it tells you we've had an increase of over 45% in the, uh, July 2024 to March 2025 period compared to the same, uh, period the previous year. So, uh, what a tremendous outcome for patronage on our ferry network. Uh, and of course, March, we launched, uh, new City Cat, City Cat 30. Uh, Benarabar Two was launched, the ninth double-decker City Cat to join our growing fleet. I had the pleasure of joining our newest ferry master, Nina, who started, uh, with us as an apprentice to christen the vessel. And, um, what a fantastic outcome that was. It makes me feel very old to be now launching the ninth next generation City Cat, as we used to call them, Madam Chair. But, um, finally, just touching on our last mode immobility, we've continued to roll out the immobility parking hubs in the CBD and, uh, surrounding suburbs and, uh, clearly loved by many, more than 881,000 immobility trips were taken during the January to March 2025 quarter. So of course, we have the Christopher Fuller government that has announced the, uh, sorry, Christopher Fuller government that has announced the inquiry into e-scooter and e-bike safety and council, uh, very much looks forward, uh, to contributing to that. And we've already had some productive discussions, uh, with the Minister's office about how, uh, to do so. Um, but Madam Chair, we had some fascinating comments, uh, from councillor Cassidy just before, uh, you know, who I think ran out of words, uh, three minutes in and then had to sort of ad lib for the last two minutes of that speech where he went a little bit off piece, he was calling us the coalition of chaos and all sorts of things there. I was surprised the Brock Alexander speech didn't come out. He normally likes to bring that one out when he runs out of room and such to mention the teardrop tattoo and the percentage of the votes that he got. But look, we heard a lot of things from councillor Cassidy, I just want to cover off on some of these. First of all, the, the idea that, 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 as an organisation, the Lord Mayor is pulling the strings between capital and expenditure, uh, in a nefarious way, uh, just switching it over, you know, nothing, nothing to see here, like a magician in a restaurant going from table to table. Uh, that is, um, he called it, he called the switching from capital to expense, councillor Cassidy actually called it a con. That is what he, he, he called it. What is the switching of capital to expense? It's an Australian accounting standard. It's set by the Australian Accounting Standards Board. It's something that when they update the rules, everyone in this country has to do. And when we do something and it's capital in the budget, but then we go through and we re-categorise it as expense, say for example, you were going to build a footpath, uh, and then it, it was actually more maintenance of the footpath that you did, then you would re-categorise that. And so it was with a lot of the flood clean-up, we had a capital project planned, but then flood clean-up and recovery becomes an expense. So not a conspiracy theory, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Matthew.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I rise to speak on item C. Um, let, let's start with operating surplus of 10%, uh, a healthy asset consumption rate and a short-term cash position. That's actually good news, in a sense. It suggests that the books are balancing, at least in the short term. There's also other areas, um, which are, you know, positive. Ferry patronage is up, seniors are making use of the free off-peak transport and there's 2.5 immobility trips which have been taken in the past nine months, even though parking remains a huge issue for the city. But that information suggests that, and not just suggests, but proves that people want alternatives to private cars use, particularly when those options are accessible. But this report is a bit of a mirror and it reflects a pattern of delayed delivery, vague justification and budget reshuffles with very little public accountability. Across almost every programme, we see underspending explained with the same tired phrases, timing differences, capital expense reclassification, to be reviewed in quarter four. These aren't explanations, they're evasions. And these are being used to cover up a worrying trend of under-delivery. Uh, we see across many capital projects on the budget that they're actually being delayed. On paper, it looks maybe like a saving, but in reality, it's deferred expenditure and service delays. The cost hasn't gone away. And this isn't limited to major projects. Me, projects across drainage, stormwater, bikeways and suburban infrastructure have all fallen behind. Meanwhile, council, through these papers, it shows, reins heavily on ex-cyclone Alfred, which was a real event as an all-purpose excuse for service and delivery disruptions, even in areas where there's no direct colouration. We also see again, a particular shortfall in development infrastructure charges and that's no doubt connected to the infrastructure charges changes that happened in 2023. What I find fascinating, of course, is the Lord Mayor has gone on to defence and talked about these pressures when that choice to cut developer infrastructure charges in 2023 was a choice that this L N P council made and this, through you Chair, Lord Mayor, made. And that loss of revenue is undeniably putting more pressure for revenue on rates payers. The public doesn't want buzzwords and budget tweaks. They want to know if my street is safer. Is my bus more reliable? Will it run on time? Will it be more frequent? Is my suburb flood resilient? Because we've experienced flooding so many times. And this budget doesn't answer any of that. Finally, I, I just want to highlight, interestingly through these papers, I found the imbalance, um, between where the public attention goes and where the money goes. Burnett Lane lighting is being allocated $133,000. More lighting is very positive. But these smaller, highly visible upgrades are being prioritised while it seems larger systematic works, which are delayed, deprioritised, are now being obscured behind accounting shuffles. I want a Brisbane that's not just a solvent council, but a visionary one. As I said, in 2023, when we debated the $400 million cuts to our budget, I said then, and I've said since in this chamber multiple times, it would take a little bit of time, a year or two, to see the effects of these full cuts. And here we are, we are seeing them. Interestingly enough, I found through you Chair, the Lord's Mayor's speech, the defensiveness on it, pretty startling. I think it tells you what's potentially coming ahead. We need greater clarity, more ambition and a commitment to planning that centres on people, not just shuffling numbers. And we need to hold that and do that for the public interest, which is why we will not be supporting item C.
Further speakers. Councillor Wines.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Just here to speak to item C, uh, the, uh, review into, um, the quarterly operational and financial review. So what we're going to do here is we're going to talk about, um, the real world for a moment. Now, um, there's been a lot of gratuitous criticism of the council, uh, and the delivery programme for the last 12 months. I'm going to say some things, uh, because I, unlike some people who speak in this place, live in the real world of, um, genuine events. For example, uh, much of what we do is cement and bitumen. Now, cement and bitumen won't set when it rains. We lost 65 out of 80 days this summer to rain. If you lose that much time, you can't, to, to deliver a drain, you have to halt the use of the drain, go into the earth and then replace the drain and then effectively, once it's back there, turning it, the drain back on. That, that's a, a very basic, um, description, description of what happens. You can't do that if you are living in the wettest summer since 1974, which is what we've just lived through. Uh, you can't do drainage works, um, if you've got the wettest May that anyone can remember. Now, councillors should remember, we saying this in the past, we typically back-end a lot of our work, particularly drainage work, to get it out of wet season. So a lot of it is done April, May, June. We prepare in, in the first quarter of the financial year, we deliver in the final quarter and that's normally because of weather. It has been an unseasonably wet May and that has affected our delivery timeframes on things that require cement to set, on things that require bitumen to set. For bitumen to set, uh, it doesn't just require no rain, it requires dry conditions. Now, when you look at some of these graphs and some of these, um, and some of the figures discussed, the delivery programme, uh, much of it has to do with the fact that your concrete, your drains, your bitumens won't set in the weather presented and there have been delays reflective of that. There's been attacks on our, uh, drainage delivery programme, or I would say to the people in Ash Grove who, who lived through the, the Venus, uh, Street, Fraser's Road, Drainage Upgrade, that was a big project. It was so, sometimes we consider that each project is exactly like another project. Take, I'm going to stay in drainage because it's, it's a normal council activity. If all you have to do is do a subterranean bore and then put in a tunnel, a, a drainage casing, that's a lot easier than having to do a two metre diameter, 40 metre long, um, uh, drain, crushing the Brisbane Tuof as you go, linking to existing major, um, major drainage networks. They are not the same. They're not the same expense, they're not the same in effort. Uh, I know, for example, uh, right now in Marchant Ward, there is a, you know, I, I hear, I hear criticism that we're not delivering drainage. Well, I would say to people who live in the, the North Side, um, they would be seeing the effort and the works that we're doing on Hamilton Road, where we've had to take a lane on Hamilton Road in the, in the approach to Chermside Shops. We've had to do it now in the hope that we can get out before Christmas, before the traffic all comes back. It's a six-month project that upgrades the whole drainage system down the hill from Charles down to Gimpy Road. It's a massive project, but it appears in our work as one. Right? So not just, for, for the, for the kind of expense that would be associated with that, we could do a number of smaller ones, but that community requires that drain to be upgraded. It is a highly, for drainage work, it is a highly visible piece of infrastructure that we're, that is being delivered. It requires, and don't just consider, I would say this, don't just consider the expense of the, of the delivery of the project. A project like that requires traffic control, lane closures, it approaches Gimpy Road, so it has to interact with, with again, the D T M R asset. There is a lot of secondary expenses associated with the delivery of these projects. So I would say this, not all projects are created equal. Some are much more expensive and much more complicated than others and that is what a lot of this year has been on. And that being said, I cannot push this point enough. This has been the wettest September, uh, this wettest year, the wettest summer, this has been the wettest summer since 1974 with a flood and a cyclone. That is the circumstances where our crews, our teams, our contractors have been delivering what is still an exceptional programme of work.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I stand here today on clause C, not just to critique the operational plan and financial report, but to call out a deeper failure, a failure to truly see Brisbane for what it is now and what it could become. Brisbane has the lowest percentage of public transport coverage among mainland Australian capitals. That's not just a statistic, it's a barrier trapping workers, families and young people, shutting them out from the opportunities this city should offer. This plan isn't for new roads or better public transport, it's for patching potholes and propping up old bridges. That's not a vision, that's maintenance disguised as progress. The L N P's cuts and chaos, spending more on keeping old assets limping along than it is on building the new infrastructure our future demands. These numbers demonstrate we're a city of contrasts, where some suburbs thrive while others fall behind. Forty percent of residents in Brisbane live in areas classified as disadvantaged or struggling. For many, the daily reality is a struggle against neglect, missed opportunities and a system that seems designed to leave them out. Only about one-third of Brisbane residents live within an 800 metre walk of a public transport service, running every 15 minutes between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And while the L N P regime boasts about congestion busting projects, they turn a blind eye to real dangers like the intersection of Bodas Road and Nottingham Road, one of the most dangerous intersections in Brisbane, or the brand-new Polara Shopping Centre, where still waiting for traffic lights to keep our locals safe. It's a battle of Adelaide Street versus Ritchie Road, Roma Street Parklands versus Laura Keat Park in Alchester, where playground was left for months wrapped in COVID warning signs and red tape was removed weeks before the election last year and never replaced by the former councillor, despite it being a couple hundred metres away from her office. There are communities waiting to be supported that aren't accounted for in this update. Patching potholes and re-announcing the same upgrades isn't a strategy, it's a spin. This isn't future-proofing Brisbane, it's political window dressing and residents see right through it. At least they did in Kalimba Ward this last election. In fact, one of our locals was so fed up with the state of one of our streets, they brought this into my office, an actual chunk of road that actually broke near them. And, or maybe it might be some of the asphalt or the bitumen that fell off from one of the drains that councillor Wines was just like chewing a spout. This is what the L N P coalition of chaos congestion busting and maintenance funding that they claim looks like. No progress in this report. I even drew a smiley face on it as well, just in case, because we're very happy to see some netting hopefully going up just under the bridge as well, so that it doesn't fall on our heads under there. We also have a helmet from the City Safe Programme just sitting in the opposition office as well, waiting to be worn for residents, which they're welcome to collect, from Jared Cassidy's Opposition Leaders Lounge. And this is what could happen to our Story Bridge. Meanwhile, services that do matter to families, to people, to real people, where communities face brutal cuts, this isn't being addressed through this report. I would table this rock hour, I'd love to keep it here, as a reminder to us to work hard every single day. There's $400 million slashed from programmes that build stronger and better neighbourhoods. Brisbane families are paying more while costs keep rising and services keep shrinking. It's like running on a treadmill that's speeding up, you're working harder, but you're getting nowhere. I see a Brisbane where every neighbourhood thrives, where public transport links communities built on practical solutions, not politicking, a city that learns from the best systems to get people moving efficiently and affordably. This operational plan and financial report falls short of the vision Brisbane deserves. It's time to stop the spin, stop the excuses and start investing in a future that works for everyone.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And that sounded to me like a pitch for the leadership of the opposition there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that sounded to me like a pitch for the leadership of the opposition there. Councillor Colly is not here, watch out councillor Cassidy. Madam Chair, I rise to speak on Item C, the Annual Operational Plan, Progress and Quarterly Financial Report. As you'll see in the report, things are continuing on track well in Programme Three, whilst keeping our costs down to ease the pressure on household rates and finances. Programme Three continues to deliver services and projects for residents, with the variances in the report mainly related to timing, and we're on course to align with the budget at the end of the year. Madam Chair, as part of our rolling programme of new studies and revisions, there was a significant update to flood mapping late last year, and this updated mapping was given a stern test this quarter as we experience the effects of tropical cyclone Alfred. Brisbane City Council is proud to be a leader in providing flood risk information, and we want residents to feel safe, confident, and ready for severe weather events. The floodwise property reports and mapping provider highly valued and much-used resource accessed by residents and businesses. And between the 2nd and 13th of March this year, Madam Chair, we saw a full year's worth of visits and downloads on our online flood mapping, with 571,000 people accessing flood information, 45,000 floodwise property report downloads, and 1.85 million flood awareness map views. Madam Chair, it's clear that the public really valued the mapping, as reinforced actually by Paul De Jersey in his recently published review, which praised several elements, including the emergency dashboard interactive information and mapping tool, which was used for the first time during a severe weather event. The community notification tool was highly successful in extending councils' live data updates and communications reach into the community. Madam Chair, our three environment centres at Boondle Wetlands, Downpour Creek, and Carrawatha Forest are seeing another strong year. The officers do an absolutely fantastic job encouraging residents and visitors to engage with nature through much-loved activities like bushwalking, guided tours, and bushkindies. With over 6,200 students hosted at Environment Centre Schools Programme so far this year, the school learning programme for prep to Year 12 students continues to go from strength to strength. Madam Chair, we continue to deliver new and upgraded park projects around the city and suburbs, as well as the Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Accelerated Programme of shade sail installation. And some of the park projects that have been undertaken include the dog-off leash area refurbishments at Nathan Road Park in Runcorn, and Takaru Park at Nudgee Beach have been completed, with turf renovations and upgrades to the dog agility equipment. There have been playground replacements at Sedgmore Street Park in Stafford Heights, and Nunda Memorial Park, and various upgrades to facilities in parks across the city, from upgraded basketball at Woodland Avenue Park in Forest Lake, to picnic spaces in Spring Water Place Park in Alchester, and car parking in Portis Paddock Park in Tingal Park. We've also delivered at Murray Rec Reserve with a major upgrade, of course, to the Brisbane International Cycle Park. The new Criterion Track is extraordinarily popular, it's of international standard. It features two loops, so it gives opportunity for different racing options. And that's just a bit of a snapshot, Madam Chair. The Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, the Winham Waiting Pool upgrade is underway. It includes repair and replacement of some existing playground features, plus some new features, including new play spaces, beach cubby houses, and new shipwreck structure. And I recall councillor Givney being there very early on. Before you came, councillor, you were that interested to talk to the local community about what this upgrade could look like. And of course, there's the exciting new upgrades at Glendorman Park, and not just the multi-use bike track. The Lawns Street Playground is also receiving an upgrade, as well as new shade sales going over at Logan Road Playground, two new accessible parking bays, and a new footpath connection with a pedestrian walkway. Madam Chair, there is so much happening in Programme Three. We are very excited about delivering for the community. I'm incredibly proud of all of the work that we have done so far this year. There's still more to come, of course, and as we prepare for the new financial year, I'm looking forward to continuing to deliver for the people of Brisbane. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, the debate's been very interesting on this clause so far. So I just wanted to, through you, Chair, councillor Murphy, the pushback, of course, on the LMP coalition of chaos comments, of course, was quite interesting. But I just bring you to maybe watch a couple of programmes, actually, that recently proved this chaos. And one's, of course, Four Corners on Monday night, and of course, on Sunday, The Insiders, because chaos is raging, and it's not going to go away anytime soon. So what effect that's going to have here in Queensland and in Brisbane, we don't know, but it doesn't look good. And then, again, through you, Chair, councillor Wines was saying that he lives in the real world. Well, I think we all live in the same world, councillor Wines, through you, Madam Chair. But perception is everything. And what we perceive, what you perceive as the real world and what we perceive, obviously, we disagree from time to time, right? So I just want to let you know, I do live in this world that you live in. Okay, moving on, we've talked about capital, we've talked about expenses, right? But we haven't really talked about revenue at this stage in this particular clause. So I just had a look at what the revenue was in a couple of areas. One was the, well, okay, so what they said was, with revenue, there was a couple of areas that they haven't done too well in. They haven't achieved where they should be through the budget in the third quarter. One of them was parking fines. And when I was going through, going through some of this with one of my team members, one of my advisers, I should say, I said, this sort of sounds familiar. Did they use this excuse last time, last year? So we looked it up last year, they used the same excuse last year and the year before that. Right, it just, you know, it's like, okay, can't you project what the budget should be in a more responsible way? If you don't achieve it like the first year, or three years ago, you'd think you would have improved on your speculation, basically, or your crystal ball, right? As to where you would like to be, and maybe pay it back a little bit, but, oh, no, 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 we will use the same figure virtually year after year after year. And infrastructure charges is the same. This was another area that they said that we haven't done too well in, and this is the reason why our revenue is down. So, you know, I mean, you've got all these, you've got all this help up at Brisbane Square, right? You'd think you would use all that talent up there to get the budget projections a little bit better, or better, well, more accurate anyways, right? Now, we can be off a few per cent, whatever, whatever that happens. Things happen through the year, cyclones happen, floods happen and things like that as well, which are major events. But generally speaking, you should be able to, I would think, project a little bit better than you have, right? With parking infringements, I thought that was really interesting as well, because one, a couple of, there's two or three major calls that we get from residents in regards to issues they have, especially in the Forest Lake area, because we, especially in the Forest Lake suburb, but not specifically, well, specifically Forest Lake suburb, but other suburbs as well that make up my ward, and that is parking infringements. And I'm talking about people bringing up complaining, right? That their neighbours are parking out the streets with many, many vehicles, which weren't really designed to handle that sort of vehicle parking in their particular street. And they can't really get, they can't really get a really good response from cars to come out and have a look, you know? And when you find out, when you inquire as to why it's taking so long, because some of these, I mean, they need to come out in a shorter period of time, of course, to actually see what's happening. And, but by the time they come out, of course, the problem is driven away, right? But the reasons we're sort of indicated is that, you know, they don't have a large team of people in this unit that actually do the work, right? Now, I know that councillors have cut back a lot of workers.
councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to join the debate on Item C. As the report shows, for Programme Four and Seven in the last, or the latest quarter, the Shrinna Council is continuing to support more housing and economic development, even as more people choose to call the city home. With respect to Programme Four, a central priority is ensuring that more infrastructure, services, and homes can be delivered as soon as possible, helping us plan for a growing city. To this end, we have undertaken a range of initiatives in the period to March 2025, including, one, the adoption of the inner-city affordability initiative Car Parking Amendment, helping to reduce costly car parking requirements; two, receiving government approval for the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan and the LJIP and LTIP, and everyone in the chamber would be aware that these have been recently adopted; number three, the commencement of the Mount Gravatt Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan and workshops with landowners to inform the Winham Central Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan, with completion of both plans to help facilitate more housing and economic opportunities. Additionally, for the period ending March 2025, the team in Development Services approved 9,246 new dwellings through assessing 2,971 development applications. Madam Chair, while council approvals are increasing, we have seen in the past that only half of those approved get built due to challenging construction, due to the challenging construction environment. The Development Services team has also provided additional dwelling capacity to Brisbane's housing supply by planned ceiling 2,302 freehold dwelling units and 1,114 freehold residential lots. Madam Chair, as part of being Brisbane's lifestyle capital, is ensuring that our neighbourhoods and public spaces are receiving targeted upgrades to enhance their appeal and offerings, which is about the Better Suburbs Places and Spaces Programme. As of March 2025, the first of these projects being on the corner of Ryan's Road and Robinson Road Nunda has started, and that project will be delivered over coming months. There are two other projects following on behind that in Indrapelli and Salisbury. So we are committed to delivering housing, infrastructure and upgrades needed across the city to ensure Brisbane remains a vibrant, livable, and accessible city. Moving to Programme Seven, Economic Development, the Brisbane LGA, as I mentioned last week, is home to 138,000 small businesses. The Shrinna Council is continuing to support small business, and we have a range of initiatives and programmes underway to support this sector. These initiatives are outlined in the Annual Operating Plan and include the free co-working spaces at both the Brisbane Business Hub and the Suburban Business Hub in Nunda. These have been utilised by over 4,212 participants. The Brisbane Business Hub was a beta initiative and has developed a network of over 66,000 business people since launch, and has delivered over 45 workshops and 95 mentoring sessions with more than 1,800 attendees. Now, looking at growing the visitor economy, Brisbane City Council through Brisbane Economic Development Agency are continually engaging our national and international conferences and securing events for the city. Having secured 52 bid wins, the anticipated economic activity for the city is up to $47.5 million and supports the equivalent of 268 full-time jobs. The team has also managed to secure 26 major events to the city, which will generate up to $169 million in economic activity for the local economy. These include the Truck Show, Magic Round, the English and Irish Lines in July, and recently announced the Royal Edinburgh Military Tattoo, which Brisbane will host in February next year in celebration of its 75th anniversary. And I think from recollection, they've got something like three different sessions on for that now, and perhaps depending on the ongoing demand, they might be able to organise a few more days for that particular event. So Programme Four and Programme Seven are continuing to deliver for the city. We're looking to continue to support the housing demands of the city and also to support the economic development of the city as we move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions, I mean, further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to Item C, the Annual Operational Plan Quarterly Financial Report for the period ending March 2025. I'm proud to speak to the item before us, Chair, because our quarterly financial report is a direct reflection of this Shrinna Council's commitment to making Brisbane even better. And we're doing it so in a financially responsible way. I've heard a lot of interesting contributions from those opposite, but residents know the truth. The Labor-Green's coalition of chaos made billions in big spending promises during the election, which would drive up council spending by a staggering 20%. Those opposite had a lot to say in the debate about vision, Madam Chair. Now, we know what their vision was. Their vision was a 20% increase in council spending. They took that to the election, and the residents said, no. Residents didn't vote for their vision, because residents know that every big spending promise made by those opposite isn't coming from councillor Cassidy or councillor Griffith's pocket, it's the ratepayers that would be forced to foot the bill for all their reckless spending commitments. Now, Madam Chair, this Shrinna Council is putting downward pressure on rates and rents by keeping the budget balanced, whilst ensuring that we can continue to deliver the programmes and services that residents love most, like our active and healthy programme, through which we've delivered more than 6,650 free and low-cost health and fitness sessions enjoyed by more than 72,000 residents in just the past nine months. That's even more than the same period last year. We've delivered 26 grants to Brisbane's up-and-coming artists, who have shared an almost $270,000 in funding through the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships and Creative Sparks programmes. We've delivered a brand-new clubhouse at Finsbury Park for Goldcrest Cricket Club and Commercial Hockey Club, who I know are very excited to move into their new home in the coming months. And we continue to deliver council's award-winning contact centre, which has consistently surpassed industry standards with a 92% customer satisfaction rate. I continue to get comments every day from residents about how incredible our contact centre is. Meanwhile, major private companies are left wanting, unable to accomplish what our own council has consistently achieved year on year. Chair, this Shrinna Council continues to deliver the largest library service of any local government in Australia, and more than 4 million visits, and more than 7.5 million loans and downloads from our library collection in just the past nine months. Chair, the former Labor State Government spent almost 10 years increasing taxes while cutting funding for grassroots community programmes and services, like our First Five Forever. But we have kept debt under control whilst we're still delivering three times more funding for libraries than our closest comparative library network, which is run by the city of the Gold Coast. This quarterly report demonstrates that we are keeping costs down whilst ensuring that we can continue to deliver the programmes and services that matter most to Brisbane residents. Chair, we have the ability to deliver all of these programmes because of this Shrinna Council and our many years of strong and responsible financial management. We've all seen and heard about this hidden budget woes that the former Labor State Government concealed from every Queenslander. The former Labor State Government spent almost 10 years increasing taxes while at the same time cutting funding for grassroots community programmes and services, and they now have to show for it is a debt bomb that will take Queenslanders years to recover from. The Shrinna Council is committed to the people of Brisbane that we would take the pressure off household rates and rents, and that's exactly what we focused on. Because responsible economic management means that we can step up with additional support when the going gets tough. That is why we're able to quickly stand up the Community Cleanup Payment Programme to assist our community organisations clean up and undertake minor repairs to get them back on their feet after ex-tropical cyclone Alfred, delivering $7,500 cleanup payments to more than 100 community organisations across the city. And just the other week, I got a call from Emmanuel City Mission expressing how incredibly grateful they were for the leadership of the Shrinna Council. grateful they were for the leadership of the Shrinna Council, and, Madam Chair, this is just one of the many reasons why I'm proud to be part of this Shrinna Council, and I commend Item C to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on Item C, the Annual Operational Plan and Quarterly Financial Report for the period ending March 2025. I specifically want to touch on the fantastic work of the City Standards Programme. Now, there's been some very interesting commentary in this chamber, and it's very interesting, I think councillor Wines hit the nail on the head in talking about the reality of what has been happening in this city. I think people have totally forgotten that we actually had a tornado event in the eastern suburbs in January, followed by ex-tropical cyclone Alfred in March. Now, I don't know whether anyone realised, but the bomb never predicted this was going to happen, and so we were never able to predict this in our financial planning. And so whilst someone on the opposition might think that, you know, we should have planned better for this, I really do not think anyone would have predicted that Brisbane would have had a cyclone in March, but, hey, who knows? Now, let's just talk to some of the claims that the opposition have put forward today. So Cassidy was claiming that we're filling less potholes. Council fills over 59,000 potholes. Now, you may not realise that actually 9,000 of those potholes have been reported by residents, and 50,000 were reported by our own teams. Now, that is a really great way that we proactively identify and fix the road damage within our network. But one thing that is really important about our road network, and we need to understand this, is that when it rains, it causes significant chaos and it undermines the road surface. So excessive rain weakens the road surface, causing failure over time. Now, we've actually had 1.4 metres of rain in Brisbane since January. So I'm only 1.6 metres tall, and so that is a hell of a lot of rain. So our road network has suffered immensely, hence why our crews are out there all the time, filling potholes, sealing cracks and patching roads where they can be. Now, this also then impacts our road resurfacing programme, and councillor Wines really hit the nail on the head in suggesting that we cannot road resurface in conditions when it is pouring rain. So these extreme conditions have limited our ability to undertake repair works during this quarter, and now that the conditions are starting to stabilise, fingers crossed, touch wood, the repair activities will now start ramping up. We expect expenditure to return to budget before the end of the financial year. Through ongoing investment and proactive maintenance, we, the Shrinna Council, are keeping Brisbane moving and ensuring that our roads remain safe, reliable and built to support the growing needs of our city. Now, Madam Chair, there were a few claims also about our parks network. Now, under this programme, we maintain over 2,000 parks and more than 100,000 park assets are maintained across this city each and every year. We also undertake more than 70,000 tree trims to support Brisbane's urban canopy, providing shade and improving the livability and enhancing the natural beauty of our suburbs. Now, again, I might just acknowledge that in January, our crews that undertake this work had to divert their resources to be able to support our community when they needed it most. Now, they produced 500,000 sandbags. These are the same people that are out maintaining our parks and our green spaces, and I do, Madam Chair, want to put on record just how much we appreciate these people. These are amazing workers in our community that do so much, and during ex-tropical cyclone, they went above and beyond. So again, I want to put on record to our City Standards crews, both in City Standards and in Compliance, for going above and beyond during that period. Madam Chair, I also want to talk about waste management in this city. So as the largest local government, Brisbane City Council manages more waste than any other council in the country, collecting over 600,000 bins each and every week and working to reduce waste going to landfill. This growth is driven by the Shrinna Council's initiative to make, sorry, my apologies, we have actually recycled over 60,000 tonnes of recyclables and to keep that out of landfill. This growth has been driven by our initiative to make green bins more affordable, now costing residents less than $1 a week, and, Madam Chair, I'll have much more to say about that in the coming session. I do finally want to add that councillor Strunk mentioned that he is keen to see us find more people. That's what I heard, Madam Chair, and so I'm very happy to come and talk to councillor Strunk about what we can do in Forest Lake to put some of our fabulous static cameras out there to ensure that we are supporting his community with as many finds as he wishes. Thank you, Madam Chair, I recommend this to the chamber.
Any further speakers? councillor Cunningham.
Yes, Madam Chair, I rise to speak on Item C, and thank all the councillors for making contribution to this report, because this report highlights in detail many of the achievements and indeed the progress that we have made already this year. We've heard today the opposition is determined to claim otherwise, though, Madam Chair. Full rate rises of above 6% in years when inflation was very low under Labor, that is their record, and this is ours. It's no secret, Madam Chair, and we come into this place week in and week out, and say that we are spending less to make sure that Brisbane residents don't pay more. Households across Brisbane are tightening their budgets, and we're making the responsible decision to do exactly the same. This latest quarterly financial report has confirmed we're on track to deliver another balanced budget, thanks to responsible financial management. Our balanced budget has weathered the impacts of a pandemic and a flood, and we're keeping it balanced to weather the impacts of a cost of living and inflation crisis. You see, because we committed to the people of Brisbane that we will take the pressure off household rates and rents, and that's exactly what we are focused on doing. Keeping costs down, building better transport and investing in our suburbs must be the priority, and that's exactly what this report shows today. While the Reserve Bank's recent interest rate announcement is welcome relief, increased uncertainty in global economies has softened growth prospects, while inflation pressures are expected to continue to linger and remain above central bank targets into next year. So, for council, this means that we must remain vigilant. This progress report outlines that operating expenses are below budget as of March, and we continue to monitor this closely. Just like your household budget, we're scrutinising every single dollar in and out. Today's report also shows revenue to be on track with budget projections, and that council is progressing well against our almost $1 billion capital programme for this financial year, with $628 million spent across the city. These are all going into projects that keep Brisbane moving and make our lifestyle even better. On top of this, Madam Chair, more than 89% of our $4 billion budget is invested into the suburbs, making them even better places to live, work and relax. All of this while continuing to support seniors by providing eligible pensioners with a rates rebate of up to 40%, benefiting around 40,000 pensioners this year at a cost of over $20 million. We also continue, Madam Chair, to buy local, with 83% of council procurement invested with local suppliers, adding up to almost $1 billion injected into our local economy. This report today confirms delivery of our commitment to spending within our means so that we don't add unnecessary costs onto residents now, but more importantly, to the residents of the future. On the other hand, we saw the Coalition of Chaos wants to force residents to pay more. $3.5 billion worth of unfunded election commitments, a budget black hole that would have only been filled by massive rate rises. A rise that would mean Brisbane no longer had the cheapest rates in South East Queensland. Through careful management of council's expenditure, we're on track, but continued caution is required in the face of economic and market volatility. I feel that it's important to note, Madam Chair, that when it comes to depreciation, there is no change to project delivery. This is simply about accounting recognition. You see, our experience in governing is that sometimes when projects are scoped, assumptions occur on the proportion of works that may be capital versus operational. This review, at this point in time, has always corrected these to align with the correct accounting standards. So I again would say, Madam Chair, that it's not a change to delivery, it's about correct accounting recognition when delivered, and that is not project expenditure. All the hot air, Madam Chair, from those opposite, it's hardly surprising that they never got their election plan costed and verified. It is only the Shrinna Council that is committed to balancing the budget and keeping costs down for Brisbane residents.
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put Item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy, and I think it was councillor Chongwa who seconded it. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and seven against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. And can I please ask councillors who are sitting outside the chamber to please keep your conversations low, it is quite noisy and we can hear you in here. We're going to now move to Item D. Deputy Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Strunk.
Could you, how much time is left in the three-hour session?
We have about 12 minutes, I believe. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on Item D. Madam Chair, the budget that the Lord Mayor handed down last June was first and foremost about keeping a balanced budget to reduce pressure on household rates and rents. It's no secret, though, that...
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor, because I can't hear with you, with councillors chatting. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. It's no secret that rates will always be lower under the LNP than they would be under a Green Labor Coalition of Chaos. The 2425 budget, Madam Chair, was proof of that. Our general rate increase was down the bottom of the increases in the region, and we retain very proudly the lowest rates in South East Queensland. To achieve this, in the face of the current economic conditions and funding challenges that all councils face, is a testament to the Lord Mayor's hard work in keeping costs down. These are the facts. The previous Labor administration hiked rates by more than 6% four times, and in those four years, on average, the inflation rate was just 1.4%. We see in today's end-of-year review that the Reserve Bank of Australia still does not expect inflation to sustainably return to its 2% to 3% target until 2026. So while recent interest rate announcements are welcome, there is still much more to do in the face of global trade uncertainty. We have to, as I have said many times in this place, remain vigilant and continue to keep the budget balanced so that we can continue to reduce the impact on Brisbane households. Madam Chair, this report before us clearly shows that we have delivered on our commitments to maintain a balanced budget with another positive net result, ease cost of living pressure with the lowest rates and most generous pension rebates, deliver core frontline services across the suburbs, with over 89% of our budget invested in those suburbs. Today's end-of-year review provides key updates since the mid-year review, including the impacts of ex-tropical cyclone Alfred on council's assets, services, resources and project delivery timelines. It's no secret, as councillor Wines was saying earlier, that it has been a wet start to the year, and the timing of capital delivery has, of course, been affected. In uncertain times, income is projected to increase in this review. It's no secret the administration stands up for Brisbane and fights for our fair share. So it's great to see in the anticipated funding by the federal government delivered as part of MYFO to contribute to the now-completed Mogul Road Corridor upgrade, as well as contributions to the Turn Up and Go Brisbane Metro. Councillors will be aware, as again we often say in this place, only three in every 100 tax dollars is collected in this country are levied by local governments. Further, 2023 LGAQ research has revealed that around $360 million in costs has been shifted to councils in just one year. In total, we represent, in total, the cost shifting has been around 378% since 2002. So it's important that council continues to advocate for fairer funding from both the state and the federal governments, and we won't stop standing up for our city. Madam Chair, expenses are also set to decrease, mainly due to Brisbane Metro returned works to the state, with amounts transferred to future years. Community equity is also lower, driven by lower-than-anticipated revaluation adjustments. Now, Madam Chair, I spoke about debt and liabilities earlier in question time, but it bears repeating. Council's net debt for 2425 is $3.68 billion and is projected to decrease every year over the forward estimates, a 7.7% decrease by 2728. This is in stark contrast to every other level of government. In the state government's MYFA, Labor's last budget update, net debt is expected to increase by 292%. And federal Labor's recent budget, net debt is expected to grow by 38%.
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. That's just some la-la land stuff coming from councillor Cunningham, when the deputy mayor says that apparently if you have an LNP regime in power in Brisbane, rents will go down and rates will go down. But what is the reality that people have been living with in Brisbane over the last 12 months? Is rents have been going up and rates went up. The rates went up by almost 4% on average in this budget, and fees and charges went up by 10%. So I wish I was as carefree as councillor Cunningham with all these things, but we actually worry about the future of Brisbane. We actually worry, but the LNP just seemed to say, it's all fine, there's nothing to see here despite the damning figures that we have before us today. Now, this is also an interesting item today to be an end-of-year review, because the document before us is dated the 30th of June. There's still a month to go, so today is the 27th of May, and this document of which we're debating is finalising expenditure on the 30th of June, which is really quite incredible. And what it tells us, though, despite it being another trick up the LNP sleeve of accounting, they like tricky accounting measures, but what this does tell us is that Brisbane as a city is in a big mess with the LNP in charge. This is softening us up for a dire June budget, just like the Lord Mayor's trying to soften Brisbane up for a toll on the Story Bridge. So what we can expect next month is a budget that will see rates going up, fees and charges going up, and in fact, the only thing that might come down next year is the Story Bridge itself. We're seeing sheets of concrete flying off the Story Bridge at the moment, and the Lord Mayor today, he heard my interjection, and I know you pulled me up on that chair, when I said, are those nets in place, keeping people safe on the Story Bridge? He heard that, he had a little smile because he knows that not only has he completely and utterly stuffed up the maintenance of the Story Bridge, he's not even keeping the people of Brisbane safe from his... from his mismanagement of that bridge. So we know that's the only thing that's possibly coming down next financial year. And this LNP regime has this really sneaky and tricky way and tricky habit of, as we've just been discussing, depreciating assets so they look like expenses instead of spending capital on new infrastructure. And we have that reality before us in here in a massive way. Now, what we had before was the third quarter review. This is the full picture of, well, possibly the full picture of this year's budget. Now, despite, despite $270 million being moved from this year into next year because of project delays and mismanagement, there's also been a cut in expenses. So we've seen at the March quarter of the annual plan, the progress of the March quarter, see a huge amount of capital being converted into expenses. And then we're seeing $270 million of that expense being shuffled into next year's budget. And then what's left, there's been a $170 million cut overall. It's just absolutely incredible. Those cuts are coming on top of cuts to actual infrastructure projects which are then being delayed into next year's budget. And we've seen this playbook before. We saw this last year and we saw it the year before. Hundreds of millions of dollars being shifted from year to year to year. And when they convert funding from capital to expense, push it into the next year, and then it never happens. And we hear this terminology of sensible savings. Well, we've seen what that looks like now. It's cuts to footpath maintenance, it's cuts to drainage projects, it's delays to road projects, and it's sacking almost 500 staff. Now, they'll say, "Oh, they're not sacking them", but in reality, those positions have been disappeared. Those positions have been disappeared from the organisation. As long-term, permanent, full-time employees from council are exiting this organisation now in droves because of this LNP regime, they are not being replaced. So what does that mean for project management? Whether it's small projects like our SEF projects or major road projects or very major projects like maintaining the Story Bridge? What does it mean for services and our libraries and the responses we get out of council's contact centre when these people are not being replaced as they leave? An immense pressure is being put onto staff who are left there. So what we see here in future Brisbane, a capital decrease in 2024 mainly due to delays in the Better Suburbs Places and Spaces project. Now, this is a program area overseen by councillor Adam Allen, the Chair of the City Planning Committee, and one of those Better Suburbs Places and Spaces projects in Nunda, isn't it? Through you, Chair. So he's even cutting a project in his own ward, Brave, I guess. It was one of the few, one of the few projects that was funded in that program. That's been cut in this budget review. We also see, of course, and we've heard councillor Cunningham blame other levels of government, there's a loss of revenue because the former state Labour government introduced 50-cent fares. That's being used to blame a reduction in revenue, of course. In transport, a reduction in revenue due to Translink Telling Council. They no longer require us to manage rail replacement bus services as well. But of course, that doesn't account for the enormous drop in capital expenditure this year in the transport section of the budget of $47 million. Because if you follow the lines along into next year's forecasts, there's a $47 million decrease this year, but only a $22 million increase in next year's budget forecast. So quietly, the cuts continue. In infrastructure, it's no better. A massive hit to capital expenditure to the tune of $35 million from this year, but barely $16 million is reallocated across the next two years to make up for it. So a cut of almost $20 million. It is no wonder when you read these papers before us today that the LNP have abandoned the Story Bridge entirely. They find building culverts in the suburbs of Brisbane too difficult, let alone maintaining the Story Bridge. And the sad story continues program after program.
Councillor Cassidy, I do have to ask you to stop there due to, under the provision of section 3513 of the meeting's local law, on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now put item D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against no.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Division has been called by councillor Chong Wah and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Cute little thumb. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and seven against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now move Transport Committee report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Infrastructure Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. City Standards Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. And Community and the Arts Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. And Finance and City Governance Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I have a petition from residents calling for upgrades to Mulberry Park.
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition from the parishioners of the Nemmy's Road Runcorn Church.
Councillor Howard.
Madam Chair, I have two petitions. One is requesting council fulfil the proposed actions outlined in the Victoria Park for Ramben Draft Master Plan September 2022. And the second one is a petition requesting council expand upon the memorial within Emma Miller Place 109 Roma Street, Brisbane City.
Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to General Business. Any speakers? Councillor Cunningham. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to continue my travel report for the benefit of the chamber and residents of Brisbane. So what I got up to was our arrival into Kobe. So for those of you who don't know, Kobe is Brisbane's longest-standing sister-city relationship. And this year, in fact, we commemorate the 40th anniversary of this relationship. So it's an incredibly special and auspicious occasion. So the group travelled from Tokyo Station via a high-speed train, otherwise known as the bullet train, a Shinkansen, into Shin Kobe Station. That afternoon, Brisbane City Council partnered with the Kobe City Government and Jetro Kobe to hold a business forum, Madam Chair. Jetro, or the Japan External Trade Organisation, is a government-related organisation that works to promote mutual trade and investment between Japan and the rest of the world. The purpose of the business forums in overseas markets like Kobe are to profile Brisbane, the trade and investment opportunities that our city can offer. And the business delegates were really excited to meet with counterparts in Kobe to establish new connections, have conversations and relationships. So we had all the delegates and invited businesses from the Kobe City Government and the surrounding areas to this forum. And it was a full room, Madam Chair, highly worthwhile and successful. Friday's program, Madam Chair, consisted of meetings, a courtesy call with the government, site visits, presentations and the formal civic reception to mark the 40th anniversary of that sister-city relationship. It's incredibly important, I think, Madam Chair, for Brisbane to learn from other cities and also to share Brisbane's expertise and practices. One of the topics that Brisbane and Kobe have a lot in common is the management of natural disasters and preparing residents for natural disasters and helping rebuild their city and recover. It's certainly beneficial, I think, to sit down face-to-face and be able to discuss and ask questions that face both our cities. We travelled to the Kobe City Government Building to meet with their crisis management office, the chief director and their term to learn more about the city of Kobe, their crisis management system, as they call it, and the various types of events that that city faces. You'd be surprised that while some of them we have in common, some of them we don't. Obviously, we don't have earthquakes, thank goodness, here in Brisbane. But they do experience a lot of flooding in Kobe and they have issues with typhoons. And we had just been through what was the first tropical cyclone to be in southern Queensland in over 50 years. So there was certainly a lot to talk about. We learnt about the city's topography and the mountain range and their port and how they had prepared for disasters in the past and the lessons that they had learned. Many of you may not know, but there was a great earthquake that happened in Kobe in 1995 and it resulted in 4,500 casualties, Madam Chair. So it was a very somber occasion to learn from their government the lessons that they went through and how they continue to prepare their city for natural disasters. Kobe government talked about how they manage their staff in the event of a disaster and how they share information and communication with their residents. One thing that they have that we don't have here in Australia are subtitle notifications that display on the bottom of television programs. And this conveys important disaster information. And I thought that was an incredibly valuable tool and one that perhaps Australia could learn from because I know it also does happen in the United States. We had a courtesy call with Mayor Hisamalto while we were in Kobe and we were warmly welcomed by him, as well as the chairperson of the Kobe City Assembly. Mayor Hisamalto spoke about the warm relationship that Kobe continues to share with Brisbane and the enduring ties that we can celebrate on our 40th sister-city relationship anniversary. He is leading a delegation of businesses, rather, to Brisbane in July. So we're looking forward to welcoming our counterparts from Kobe.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Is that on? Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to talk about Stable Swamp Creek. And I've spoken about this ad nauseam for three years now and it should never have taken three years. But I rise this evening to place on the record my thanks and gratitude to the staff involved in this project and also my thanks and gratitude on behalf of residents for getting stage one of this project done. I've brought in some pictures of the work that has been done on the creek. I'll table these pictures with Billy, if you're around, if any of the LNP councils or other councils like to see this work. Thank you. What we have here is a cleared creek. All weed species have been removed and up to 450 tonnes of silt is gone. Another section where more silt is gone from the creek. Another section where we've removed large weed trees that were filling the creek in. And there is a clear view of the creek. So for my residents and for myself, we've just been seeking that that work gets done and gets done professionally and gets done well. And it has been delivered really professionally, really well by our staff. There's been good information provided to myself. The service has been professional. My staff and I have been communicated with really well. I've done a number of site visits and met with staff down there who've been very courteous. And I have to say that residents have also experienced the same as well. Even had a few pictures taken down there with residents. So I acknowledge that this is stage one of this project, but it is a really brilliant outcome, a great outcome. Oh, there you go. You can actually see the water in the creek there. That's Stable Swamp Creek, actually see the water in the creek. Residents are really pleased. So I'm just giving the staff in the organization a pat on the back for delivering a really good job for the residents of Rockleigh. And I look forward to, and I always do. I actually always do. I always pat the staff on the back. Because I stop and talk to the staff often, all over the city, wherever I'm going. And I enjoy doing that because I actually think that's the role. And I hear that Clem Jones used to do that. Clem Jones actually used to go out at six o'clock every morning to different sites across the city and he was actually interested in talking to the staff. It's probably why he was the greatest mayor this city's ever seen. But I just say, I just say, "Thank you to the staff. You've done a brilliant job and I'm looking forward to the future stages of this project." Cheers.
Further speakers, councillor Givney.
Thank you, Chair. I rise today to give an update on Winham, Winham, Winham and Manly, including the Safer Schools Precinct community... Sorry, the Safer Schools Precinct, the community state of origin event. And I also want to thank the council teams who are supporting projects on the Bayside. Last week, we heard a little bit more about the Safer Schools Precinct, but I wanted to rise today to show my support for the excitement that we have in our community that is coming out to Winham, Manly. As a local mum and a former educator, school safety is incredibly close to my heart. And as a councillor, ensuring our children, families and community members move safely around our schools is a priority. And I know we all share that. The Safer Schools Precinct program is an excellent example of how council can partner with local communities to deliver real, practical improvements and enhance quality of life. By addressing longstanding concerns around congestion, safety and sustainable transport in our schools, this program reflects a thoughtful planning and genuine commitment to people-first infrastructure. I'm thrilled that Winham State High School, Manly State School and St John Vianni's Primary School, along with the wider Manly community, will benefit directly from this investment. Since I've been elected, I've heard from a number of community members about safety concerns, in particular crossing on White's Road, congestion on Ernest Street and Budgerun Streets and blocking of driveways during peak times. This project is the perfect opportunity to address these concerns. The phased approach of this program, from the initial investigations and consultation through design, delivery and behavior change support, gives communities the confidence that they'll be well considered for a collaborative project. I'm particularly pleased that there will be opportunities to give genuine engagement and feedback because locals know the streets best. In the Winham, Manly ward, we pride ourselves on being proactive and a positive community and community-minded. I know our residents will embrace the opportunity to shape the precinct that works better for everyone. for everyone. To the officers leading the Safer Schools Precinct Programme, thank you for your work so far and I look forward to partnering with you closely with our schools and our community as we move to the consultation phase for the Winham and Manly precinct. I know that these projects will have real lasting improvements to make our schools safer and our streets calmer. Two other things I'd like to raise this evening, I would really like to talk about an event that we have planned for tomorrow night. I'm working with the Winham and Manly Seagulls, the juniors club, and we're actually going to be playing the State of Origin on the big inflatable screen. And I know that the club members are really, really excited about that. And I'd like to thank Danny Day from Ocean Realty for actually funding that event for our community so it doesn't cost our ratepayers any dollars. I think it's really wonderful to see community schools and clubs coming together and we let a box drop the whole area so that all the neighbours know that it's happening and it's going to be a great vibe down there at Winham and Manly Juniors tomorrow evening. I also want to have a call-out to some of the council teams that are working on some projects on the base side. A special thanks to Brendan Whittaker and the Parks Team for making Little Bayside Park look so fantastic. I know we've lost some trees there through the storms and through some kind of root diseases over the last kind of year and it's been really hard for our market groups, but I'm really thankful that they've gone in there and cleaned up and made things looking really fantastic. I also want to thank Andrew Ensbey for the Whale Park playground upgrade that we've got happening. We're really excited about that project. I know the poor team have gone in there and it's probably been a lot more than they thought with all of the play spaces underneath the joists and that were in the posts. We're not in such great condition, but I'm really thankful that they're getting all that sorted for us. And I want to thank Chris Jamison, who's also been overseeing a couple of projects in my ward, the car park at the Eleonora Boat Ramp. That's a really highly anticipated project to be done for all of our watercraft users in the area. And also the Sorry Day Site. Councillor Howard alluded to earlier today that we had a really beautiful service yesterday down on the water. We could not have asked for a better day. The tide was in, it was calm and we had the sun come up over the islands as we had our service, our moving service down there. And the new flagpoles were really greatly appreciated by our local Indigenous community members. So I just wanted to shout out to those key people. There's lots of people that do lots of great things, but thank you for all the things they're doing on the base side.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Adaman, that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Further speaker, councillor Chong Hua.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on behalf of the petitioners of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street Barden regarding installation of a traffic calming devices. This petition was in the infrastructure meeting today in item C in the agenda today, but due to the local law amendment, there was no opportunity to debate, which is very undemocratic. I support the petitioner's request to install traffic calming to make their streets safer. I met with many families and children of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street shortly after being elected in April last year, that were very keen to share their concerns and anxiety on their children's ability to safely cross their too busy streets. There are a lot of families and children that reside in these streets. I took the time to have a street meeting with about twenty to thirty parents who were pleading with me for traffic calming devices. Safety on our local neighbourhood streets is a priority issue for our community, one that is being completely ignored by this LNP administration. And as a mum myself who lives in the ward only ten minutes from my busy local school, I share their same worry. We need safer streets for our children. Approximately a year and a half ago, tragically, a QT PH student died crossing a road very close to where I live. My condolences go to the family and friends. It's absolutely heartbreaking that pedestrian safety is not prioritised by this LNP administration, who proudly prioritise motorists over pedestrian and cyclist safety. We only need to point to the annual budget twenty-four, twenty-five that shows the budget allocation for only one new traffic calming project for the entire city. Residents of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street have deep concerns about people speeding and taking shortcuts to avoid the nearby major roads that are congested. We all know this is a real issue caused by this administration's inability to resolve congestion by providing comprehensive and sustainable urban mobility network. The families of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street want traffic calming treatment, so motorists slow down and change their driving behaviour to prevent a tragic accident occurring. I guess it shouldn't be a surprise when the Lord Mayor has no shame in stating his woeful position on pedestrian safety in a previous chamber's meeting this last year. The Lord Mayor said through the chair, and I quote, "The only upgrades that the green supporter actually downgrades, things that slow traffic down, traffic lights, speed humps, pedestrian crossings, things that will make traffic go slower, they are downgrades." For our Lord Mayor to completely disregard the safety of pedestrians or cyclists and the safety of our children and neighbourhoods is shocking, quite unbelievable. The community of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street deserves to feel safe. The parents of Mackay Terrace and Anger Street deserve not to feel on edge whenever their children decide to cross their local neighbourhood streets. This is a systemic failure across our city where this LNP administration is not prioritising or investing infrastructure or well-designed planning for our growing city. I do not support the administration's response to the petition and I do support my community's expectation that their local neighbourhoods are safe for their families and children. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speaker, councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak about the one hundred and fourteenth annual Brookfield Show, which was held in the Pullenvale Ward over the weekend. Deputy Chair, I've spoken a number of times in this chamber about the Brookfield Show, most recently when it was named the twenty-twenty-four Brisbane Event of the Year at the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Awards in January. Having reached this pinnacle, it'd be easy to assume that there would only be one way to go, but no, this community event each year continues to go to another level. Unlike previous years, the twenty-twenty-five show was blessed with perfect weather and the local community responded accordingly. I know, Deputy Chair, because as a member of the Kenmore Rotary Club, which manned the entry gates over the three-day event, I saw firsthand how busy it was and the length of the queue each morning, and in particular, the many children waiting with excitement to enter. The show officially commenced last Thursday night with the Art Show Awards and again, the quality of our local artists was on display throughout the record number of entries received this year. Since becoming councillor, I have sponsored the Best Portrait Prize and this year's winning entry, A Silent Narrative by Peter Harvey, was a stunning work of art. Another highlight was the awarding of the Community Shield to long-term equestrian steward Julie Jelly. Although the horse events were cancelled this year because of the soggy conditions of the showground surface, Julie was still there helping out where she could over the three days. And the winner of the State Member for Mogul Community Award was the Kenmore Mogul RSL, which stages the highly successful Shell Green Cricket Game at the showgrounds each year on Anzac Day. Congratulations to show president James Booth for overseeing another highly successful show and the many stewards and volunteers who contributed in various ways across all three days. These volunteers come from all walks of life and business within our local community. We even have a former federal court judge working on one of the categories. Deputy Chair, when you start naming individuals, you run the risk of missing out others who make significant contributions to the success of the show. But two locals who deserve a special shout-out are former show society presidents Dan Petrie and Cath Thornton. Dan oversaw last year's award-winning show and even with his busy professional career was there every minute of every day overseeing operations on the ground. As for Cath, I've never seen a harder-working, more dedicated person committed to the success of the show and it was there for all to see again on the weekend. Deputy Chair, in summary, the Brookfield Show is one of the highlight events each year in the Pullenvale Ward and is an excellent example of what can be achieved when a community works together with a common goal. Thank you.
Any further speaker, councillor Strong.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on two events, one past and one future. Last Friday, we held a candlelight vigil against domestic and family violence at the Civic Centre Mall. And this year, I suppose it's not unsurprising, but this year actually, we had double the numbers that we had last year, which was really, really encouraging, especially to the organisers and the guest speaker that came along. Shane was her name, who told us about her family's troubles with domestic violence. Her mother unfortunately was killed by her partner and so she related some of that story to the assembled people that came along to support a very worthy cause. The organisers this year were at another community house. I pay tribute to them. This is the tenth year, by the way, and also proudly supported, of course, by our local constabulary as well that came along in good numbers, right, to support what was being said and what was being done in order to support this really deplorable social, I can't think of the word, sorry. Anyways, it didn't go on very long. It only went for about forty-five minutes. Milton Dick, the Speaker of the House, came along and gave a speech as well. But there was light-on speeches and more on just bringing people together to talk about their experiences. And it's always good to hear, obviously, from the police as well because they're the frontline responders, right, that have to go out and deal with some really hairy stuff. And I've talked to a few of them over the years and especially the young constables who don't have probably a lot of experience in this area and it really impacts them as well, not just the families, but everyone that comes in contact with domestic violence. On a brighter note, we have the Hakka Dragon Boat Festival coming up this Sunday out at Forest Lake. Unfortunately, this year, like last year, the water quality wasn't up to what it needed to be, so the boats will be on display but not in the water. Some of the teams will come along, but the programme has been increased. It's more of a cultural programme now on the stage and it'll go from about nine till about two o'clock in the afternoon. Sadly, as I say, the water quality wasn't what it could have been. There was some discussions in regards to maybe moving it into the Jamboree Ward at the river, a couple of places there along the river that have pontoons. But it was probably going to be a little bit too hard to communicate to everyone they needed to communicate to. It was probably a little bit too late to make the changes that needed to be made. Florence and Tony and Jackie, who are the leadership team of the event, I just want to pay tribute to them because they worked virtually all year long to put this together and bring the teams right from the north coast, from the south coast and sometimes overseas as well. This is the fourteenth year that it was being held and I just pay tribute to them for their commitment to this great festival and hopefully maybe next year, maybe we'll be able to have the boats somewhere, whether they be in the lake or somewhere else. Anyways, thank you.
Any further speaker, councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on two items of general business, the first one being Under Eight Day, which took place last Friday. I wanted to place my congratulations to Christie Daly and also Manny Karath from the PNC of Polaris State School, who baked endless, endless amounts of food and ran a really wonderful day alongside the school administration. There were lots of kids who had a really good time. And second, to also Stretton State College, I also visited them before I came over to City Hall last Friday and they had a wonderful, successful day. I know the teachers put a lot of effort into pulling it off and also many different people from the community come to support this. So I just wanted to congratulate the two schools in our area and every other school who will be celebrating there soon. And finally, I just wanted to briefly touch on a wonderful event we had this weekend. We had our Callum Bell Kid Chella, a very first for our area. And I would like to thank Lucy Collier, the councillor for Morningside Ward, who helped me design this event, who actually came up with this in her area. It was a wonderful success. We had over four thousand people come along. It was a wonderful and very busy day from four to eight PM on a Sunday night just before school day as well. So really looking forward to continuing free events like this. Wanted to also thank Kate and Russ for all the setup efforts and all the vendors there. They were just obliterated on the day, fully ran out of all their food. So what a wonderful outcome and just wanted to place my thanks to the Callum Bell Youth Advisory Council. We have twenty members on this and we had a few of the volunteers come out and helping us, volunteering and speaking with local residents on that day. And we look forward to hosting our next couple of events towards the end of the year. Thank you.
Any further speaker? Well, as there's no further speaker, that ends the general business. So councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item eight on the agenda. Councillor Cassidy, would you please move the motion?
Thanks, Chair. I move that this council utilise funding from the Queensland Government's Food Organic and Garden Organic's Grow Fogo Fund in conjunction with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Brisbane City Council Budget to roll out a citywide green bin service. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that this council utilise funding from the Queensland Government's Food Organic and Garden Organic Grow Fogo Fund in conjunction with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Brisbane City Council Budget to roll out a citywide green bin service. Is there any debate, councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I think the Lord Mayor indicated there would be universal support for this earlier today. So that's a good sign that the LNP will be supporting Labor's push for organic recycling to be turbocharged here in Brisbane. We have been on the record for many years calling for a comprehensive green bin plan here in Brisbane. Now, what we have had so far has been a half-hearted approach from the LNP on green waste. Thirty percent of all households have adopted a green bin. Granted, if you take out unit owners, people who live in units and you just have detached houses, the percentage is higher, but no higher than fifty percent. So what we see from fifty percent of households is grass clippings and leaves and other garden wastes continue to clog up, red bins and ultimately sent to landfill, resulting in a higher rates bill and higher emissions. And as we know, going forward, higher and higher rates bills if we don't do something to divert that waste from landfill. So the Lord Mayor must do more to keep green waste out of landfill and that's the point we've been trying to make here in council for years and we can't afford not to. Without more action, we will see the rates bill of every single ratepayer climb to record levels. In twenty-twenty-three, the former state government committed a hundred and fifty-one million dollars to help southeast Queensland councils implement or expand curbside food organics and garden organics collection services. Now, Brisbane City Council has accessed the fund and previously accessed the fund. What we would ask for is to get this important initiative happening sooner rather than later because what we know is that, we heard this in the committee last week, in the Finance Committee from the LGAQ themselves, is that the LNP state government have refused Brisbane City Council's requests and the LGAQ's requests to increase the rebate that is applied to councils for the waste levy that is in place at a state government level. That continues, the rebates paid to council continues to decrease, which means for every kilo, every tonne of waste that is put into landfill attracts a higher and higher waste levy charge. levy charge. So if we continue to put green waste, which is easily diverted when you have a council that wants to do this work away from landfill, we will see the rates of everyday people, whether they pay rates directly or, or rent a house off somebody who pays rates, we will see those rates bills increase if we don't start diverting garden organics and organic waste from landfill. So this is pretty simple and straightforward and, and so from what I can gather from the Lord Mayor's half-cryptic tabling of some near map images showing there, there are stacks of green bins now at, at Resource Recovery Centres, is that the, the council has applied for additional funding and purchased green bins to roll out and we understand that there will, will need to be a further commitment in the budget as well on top of this funding to purchase the materials and equipment we need to roll this out in terms of the bins from council to roll out a service which essentially means that people will always be putting two bins out, always the general waste and then alternate weeks, their recycling bins. One is a yellow lid recycling bin that people put hard plastics and cardboard and paper and things into and the other one is a green littered recycling bin of which they put garden organics into. We have been very clear that we want to see food organics system as well, but we think this is, given it's supported so fully by another level of government, a good step to get us on the road, so at least those bins are in place and those contracts are in place to be able to, to collect this material. And given it's State of Origin Week of course, we don't want to be outdone by the blues down south. New South Wales is set to become the first state to introduce a mandated food organics and garden organics recycling scheme. We see councils like Penrith, big councils in New South Wales, have been leading on this now for decades. That'll be mandatory by July 2030 as well as businesses and institutions from July 26. The New South Wales Government said because landfill is becoming full, they can't kick the can down the road anymore and that's what the Queensland Government's saying. So we're saying, let's play our part and roll out this service to all of Brisbane.
Any further speaker, councillor Harton?
Thank you Deputy Chair and I rise to speak on this motion that can only be described as yet another amazing backflip, backflip from the leader of the opposition on one of his signature policies. We've said it before, Madam Chair, Mr Chair, sorry, and I'll say it again, Fogo is a no-go, at least without a plan. Councillor Cassidy went to the last election proposing to cut the red top bin collection to fortnightly. That would have created a devastating, rotting pile of food waste right here in Brisbane with no serious plan to manage the consequences. No infrastructure, no modelling and no idea. Now that proposal was overwhelmingly rejected by the people of Brisbane and now Labour is back trying to recycle one of our own policies. In fact, some of you might be thinking, haven't we heard this all before? That's because you have. Last year, Labour put forward a motion celebrating another council green bin rollout and now they're doing it again, only this time they've tried to slap their name on our plan. Well, let's set the record straight. Under Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner, we have rolled out more than 150,000 green bins across this city, thanks to the city council's hugely popular half-price incentives. This means for less than $1 a week for Brisbane households that are trying to do the right things, there are thousands who are already part of the programme. Might I just add, Mr Chair, that apartments don't actually require as many green bins as the single individual households, so that is something to consider as we do this rollout. So far this year, we've managed to divert 45,000 tonne of green waste from landfill and we are not slowing down. We have already submitted application to the state government's Grow Fogo Fund to expand our city's green bin rollout even further. Something that has been announced, E and C reports and on the public record, Mr Chair, four months. They have known about this Chair because the Lord Mayor pointed it out in the E and C report earlier this year. As the Lord Mayor did say earlier in E and C, that there are so many bins that you can actually see them from space. So for councillor Cassidy to suddenly pretend that this is his idea is not only laughable, it's insulting. I also got a laugh out of the, the Labour's press release that proudly declared that the former state Labour government committed $151 million to expand green waste services across South East Queensland in 2023. Now, do you know how much actually went to Brisbane, the largest local government in Australia? Not a single cent. The former state Labour government dragged its feet on the funding of the Grow Fogo initiative. Despite our approvals, we received nothing because they kept changing the guidelines, shifting the goalposts and insisting on plastering their logos on our bins. The Labour state government's legacy of red tape upon red tape preventing many councils from accessing, accessing this funding. It wasn't until there was a change in government that these things started to move. We raised the issue with the new minister and only then, eight months after the approval, did we start to see some movement. That's the difference. We are so excited to be continuing to work constructively with the new Chris O'Farley government on waste. I can only assume that councillor Cassidy and the Labour Party are excited too, I can hear them, they're so excited, so excited that they've rushed to claim the credit for an announcement that we will be having. So on behalf of the Lord Mayor, I welcome Labour's support of our green bins initiative and I congratulate the Labour Party on seeing the error of their ways. Whilst we wholeheartedly support the spirit of this motion, since it's actually our policy, I want to point out that this concerns the allocation of funding in the 2025-26 council budget. As you know, Mr Chair, the budget is only 22 sleeps away. So I now move that this motion lay on the table until the 2025-26 council budget has been handed down.
It's been moved by councillor Harton, seconded by councillor Adaman, that the motion to be laid on the table until the budget. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against say no?
No!
The ayes have it. If, if there's no more agenda, I declare the meeting closed.